401, I'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us for the regular meeting in the County San Diego's Independent Commission. Today, in addition to our regular meeting, we'll be conducting at 5:30 PM sharp, an IRC pre-mapping public hearing to gather public input on interest and other important factors to consider how county supervisory district lines should be drawn. Before we get started, I want to thank our staff, contractors, and our host today here at the Vista Civic Center for providing us with such a great setup. I also want to thank members of the public who will be joining us today, either virtually or in person. I'll say now and will repeat later that if they're with all the COVID-19 questions on everyone's mind, everyone should feel free, commissioners and public alike, to contact our IRC staff if you've got questions about the protocols for today's meeting or future meetings. Just to preview what I think will not be unfamiliar, we'll conduct today's meeting, our regular business meeting, sorry, until about 5:15 PM. We'll then take a short break and allow the technicians to prepare things so we can move into the pre-mapping public hearing, which must start promptly at 5:30 PM. Once that public hearing is finished, we'll have another very short break and then continue on with the IRC's regular meeting business. I'll now ask the IRC clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David?
Thank you, Chair Bame. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak to the commission during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at san diego county.gov/redistricting. We ask that individuals who wish to speak to the commission complete a form in advance for planning purposes. Individuals participating virtually or by phone are asked to submit an online request, and all individuals wishing to speak in person can complete a physical speaker slip. Staff has speaker slips available. All timely requests to speak from the public made it today's meeting, whether in person or remotely, will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tagalog, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law. Chair Bame?
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is roll call. David, would you please call the roll and note for the record any absences?
Thank you. Chair Bame?
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Dostal?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ's absence is excused today. Commissioner Serbin? Thank you, Chair Bame. We do have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you, David, and thanks to all commissioners for continuing to attend all IRC meetings in their entirety in accordance with our bylaws and procedures. I'm saying that because we'll be talking about this in some more detail next week as I'll preview when we discuss future agenda items. For now, I'd just like to remind commissioners of a couple of points. First of all, I think there's some traffic issues going on right now, so I'll ask the clerk to work with me to make sure we record the presence of newly arrived commissioners once they join us, either virtually or in person. If you may be absent from a meeting, including next week, please provide advance notice via email to myself and CC, the staff lead, Barbara Jimenez, in accordance with Section 3.08 of the bylaws. Separately, while the bylaws are silent about breaks during our meetings, I do want to encourage commissioners, both in person and virtually, to take breaks when needed and take them efficiently. Please feel free to stand or stretch as you need to, or even turn your cameras off for a moment or two, since I know we can all do so while maintaining due respect for speakers, maintaining a quorum, and especially making sure we're paying close attention to any members of the public who are addressing us. Also, please keep a close eye on the clock during breaks before and after the public hearings. We have very limited time tonight in particular, so please be back in place by the time I specify before any break. For now then, let me turn to staff lead Barbara Jimenez for a brief introduction of a new IRC staffer. Barbara, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's with great pleasure that I'd like to introduce you to one of our new staff. It's a new member of the county IRC team, Keith Van Wagner. He'll be joining us as a program coordinator, actually, starting tomorrow, September 24th. We wanted to give an opportunity to introduce you to Keith. He's been with the county for five years in various roles in public health services, the Department of Purchasing and Contracting, and most recently, the Child Welfare Services. Here in his BA in Industrial and Labor Relations, has served in United States Army as a counterintelligence agent. And following his enlistment, he obtained his Juris Doctorate at the University of San Diego. He'll be supporting the IRC in addition to other duties in the County Department of Homeless Solutions and Equitable Communities. I'm pleased to have Keith as part of our smart but amazing team who's been working very hard over the past months to realize your vision as an independent commission. So unless there's any questions, I'm happy to turn it back to you, Chair Bame.
Well, thank you for that, Barbara, and welcome in advance to Keith, and thank him for his service, both in the past as a service member in the US Armed Forces and his service upcoming as one member of our staff. And as always, thanks to all the staff for all they do. The next item is non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on subject matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction but not listed as an item on today's agenda. The only action the commission may take is a referral to staff. In other words, the IRC cannot vote on any items raised by the public under this portion of today's meeting because it is not listed on our agenda. Commissioners can, however, ask staff to follow up on any questions and can request to add items to the agenda for a future meeting. With that, David, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda matters today?
Thank you, Chair Bame. No request in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission under non-agenda public communication, we would welcome your comments. Those present who wish to address the commission, please come forward to the microphone. And for those participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the Raise Hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. I would note, Chair Bame, that we have had 82 ecomments now on item number five, and I'll update that as we get to that item. I'd also like to note for the record that the log of correspondence received, including comments that have been submitted through the Community Builder tool, has been updated and provided to the commissioners and is posted on the IRC website. Correspondence received is posted on the website with today's meeting materials, and the commission's log of ex parte communications has been updated on the IRC website. I don't see any movement in the chamber, and I don't see any virtual hands, so that concludes public communication on non-agenda items.
Very good. Thank you, David, and I'll note for the record that Commissioner Diaz has joined us virtually. Welcome. The next item is approval of three separate sets of minutes respectively, from the September 2nd, 2021, pre-mapping public hearing, the September 9th IRC regular meeting, and the September 18th, pre-mapping public hearing. We will begin this item by hearing any public comments or requests to speak. David, are there any such requests?
We've received no request in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on the meeting minutes, you're welcome to do so. Please raise a virtual hand if you're participating remotely or come to the microphone if you're participating in person. Not seeing any movement in the chamber, not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bame.
Thank you very much, David. For the sake of efficiency, I'll ask commissioners to hold any comments or clarifications until we have a motion. But because this is an action item that requires a motion before any discussion, let me ask if there's a motion for approval of the minutes from the September 2nd, September 9th, and September 18th, 2021 minutes as included with the agenda materials?
Still moved.
Mr. Chen moves. Do we have a second? Commissioner Brown, thank you both very much. Is there any discussion, including any clarifications or corrections? Very good. Seeing none, and noting that Commissioner Serbin has now joined us in person just in time for the vote, I will ask David to go ahead and please call the roll for a vote.
Thank you, Chair Bame. I would like to note that the commissioners' names will continue to be called in random order. Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner, our Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Just to approve the minutes?
Yes, it is.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ's absent. Commissioner Krugliak? I didn't catch it. Commissioner Krugliak?
Sorry, I abstain.
Commissioner Krugliak abstains. Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Chair Bame with Commissioner Krugliak abstaining. All other commissioners who are present voting aye, that motion passes.
Thank you very much, David. I'll note that the next item on the agenda is the pre-mapping public hearing, again, which is a time-certain item that must begin at 5:30 PM. Seeing that we are prior to that time, I will table this item until 5:30 PM and move on to the next agenda item, with the understanding that we will suspend our discussion of regular business at approximately 5:15 PM. We'll now move on to item six on the agenda. A demographic services update and training on the District Scenario Modeler, or DSM, online mapping tool presented by our IRC demographer, Flow Analytics. I look forward to informative and useful updates from the Flow team tonight on several items, including on the long-awaited California statewide databases' September 20th release just a few days ago of the official redistricting database for the state and all its counties, including the County of San Diego. We'll also be looking forward to an update on Flow's progress regarding the racially polarized voting subcontractor, voting analysis subcontractor, I should say, and the upcoming rollout of the IRC online mapping tool. It is my pleasure, once again, to welcome John McKenzie from Flow Analytics. As this is an informational item, I just want to remind commissioners with no commission action today, we'll hear the Flow presentations and updates, then turn to any members of the public who wish to offer comment, then provide commissioners an opportunity to offer clarifying questions and comments themselves. I also want to note that John's presentation today includes one additional slide that was not included in this version sent to you with the agenda materials, commissioners. I'll ask John to point that out when he reaches that slide, and staff will make sure that the updated presentation is posted on the IRC website. With that, John, are you with us?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Very good. We can hear you, and the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Chair Bame. Unfortunately, my colleague Alex Brash, our lead demographer, who usually does some of these demographic updates, is not here this evening, so you've got just me. I apologize. But I will start with an update on the RPV analysis subcontract. That contract has been signed. Work has been ongoing for several weeks now, and during my last check-in call with Dr. Rose, which took place on Tuesday of this week, he informed me that they are well on their way and will, there's a full plan to meet the September 30th deadline and not seeing any, any problems with that at all. So happy to have the signed contract in hand on our end and happy to hear that the work is going as anticipated and as planned for. With that, I'm going to jump in to an update on the adjusted data from the statewide database, which was released on September 20th, extremely late at night. So it was, it may have been at 11:59 PM, I'm not sure. We were refreshing our screen and eventually went to sleep, but first thing in the next morning, it was available, and we were able to review the data and come up with, I can give you, I'm going to give you a verbal summary of the impacts of the changes in this data to San Diego County now, and in the coming days, we will look to put this down and document this a bit more. But with that said, I will, I'm just going to read through some of the things that Alex has told me. Hopefully, you don't ask me any very detailed questions on it because he is not here, but he did provide detailed notes, so I will read through this now. So the adjusted data did result in a net increase of 3,614 people for San Diego County, and that increases the total from the unadjusted county population of 3,000, 3,000, 3,298,634 to 3,302,248. That represents an increase of 0.11%. In other, in other words, the number of incarcerated individuals in other California counties that were relocated to San Diego County based on their last known address was greater than the number of individuals incarcerated within San Diego County correctional facilities that were relocated outside of San Diego County. So of the 28,633 census blocks within the county, 5,583 or 19 and a half percent had a change to the total population. 10 census blocks decreased in population. The largest decline was by 3,824, and that was in the census block that includes the Richard J. Donovan Correctional Facility. Other less significant declines occurred in blocks that include the Metropolitan Correction Center of San Diego and the remote training site in Warner Springs. The, in the Cal Fire, San Diego, Puerto de la Cruz Conservation Area. Of the 5,573 census blocks with positive changes, so an increase in population, 69% of those increased by only a single individual and 98% increased by five or fewer individuals. Only 97 total blocks increased by more than five individuals, and the highest positive change for a single census block was an increase of 17. All five commission districts, all five supervisory districts were affected by the adjustment. District 1 decreased by 1,943, and that is because District 1 is where the Richard J. Donovan Correctional Facility is located. The other four districts had population gains that ranged between 1,209 to 1,683 individuals. The ideal population has changed from 659,727 to 660,450, with a resulting overall deviation of the existing districts from 4.5 to 5%, and that's mostly based upon the decrease in population in District 1, where the deviation of that district moved from a negative 2.8% to a negative 3.2%. Now, I also want to mention that in reviewing this data, Flow did uncover a couple of issues with the adjusted data, and we have been in contact and reported these to the statewide database. So there is some inconsistency between the sum of the population P2, and that would be, I believe, the total population of county and the sum of the component variables of the race ethnicity table, and these sums should match when you use them. However, they don't quite. There is a difference of 23 when we do that math, and so we have inquired about that discrepancy with the statewide database to see if there may be a known reason for this. In addition, the statewide database also released new CVAP census voting age population enumerations using the 2020 block geographies, and we have identified several blocks where the census voting age population is higher than the total population for, for that block, and that, that's not possible. So this is another issue. Our quick investigation looks like it might be a matter of typos, and so this is another thing that we have, you know, inquired with the statewide database about. I do not believe we have received answers on these quite yet. I'm sure they're very busy and getting lots of other folks like myself saying, hey, what's going on? So I will update you with any resolution to these matters as we receive them. And that, that concludes my demographic services update. So I can jump right into my next presentation, or I can take any questions that you may have?
John, I appreciate that. I, I think it would be appropriate just because the presentation is going to be separate and valuable in and of itself. So are there any questions, commissioners, on these issues? I have Commissioner Diaz.
Yes, hi. Thank you for a quick summary of that adjusted data that we had been waiting for. I have a question about, so you mentioned that there was a significant population decrease in D1, but from my understanding, it's before, I guess, the census used to not take into account the place of residence, a former residence of incarcerated persons, and so I feel like there's some kind of a little bit of statistical bias there, I guess, or inaccuracy. So how do we account for that now that the law specifically clarifies that incarcerated persons, like we have to take into account their home residence, not the institution as the residence? So I just need some clarification as to that.
Yes, so that, the adjusted numbers from the statewide database are the numbers that take that into account. So that's why we go to, that's why we were waiting for those adjusted numbers from the statewide database, because what the statewide database did is they looked at the last known address of the incarcerated population, and they placed the census, sorry, they placed those individuals back into the census block associated with their last known address. So that is how that is accounted for. It was from that, that data set.
Okay, thank you. So that, that does clear that up because I was just wondering about that. So it mainly affected D1?
Correct. I will say that the overall changes are, I don't want to say they're not significant. Of course, they are significant, but in terms of population deviation, where we have over 3 million people in the county, the number, I think it was 0.11% a total effect on the population, and it is distributed, although it's heavily concentrated or more concentrated in District 1 and is distributed across all five existing districts. So the overall impact is fairly small in terms of the numbers.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Serbin?
I'll, I'll go through that. I think you wanted to tell me your resume.
While we take care of that, let me turn to Commissioner Inman, and then we'll come back. Commissioner?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Diaz's question and amplify what John said. District 1 had that decrease because the prison is located there, right? And so all of those prisoners were reallocated out of District 1, and so that's why you see a large drop, so that would be expected. It's not unexpected. I just wanted to make sure that we all understand that, that that drop was, you know, the, the objective of making the adjustments, is to actually take all the prisoners, incarcerated individuals in Donovan, and actually distribute them appropriately to where they should be allocated to get them out of District 1. So that was, that was completely expected. So thank you, Chair.
You. Commissioner Serbin, in noting that we really have a lot to get through tonight, but I don't want to disappoint you, please go ahead.
Can, is it possible to get that data that you, you recited, John? And thank you, John, but is it possible to, to receive that in a tabular format? A lot of numbers that you threw at us.
Yes, we will. We will be putting it into a written document of some form, whether it's tabulated or something else. Because we received this so late, we did, I did just ask Alex to write down everything he could about it to get to me, and as I mentioned, we will be in the coming days sort of documenting that into something that you can look through, because yeah, that was a whole lot of numbers. I apologize.
Not, not a problem. I understand. Thank you.
Not at all, and it really was useful, so I appreciate it, John. I think it's useful for the public, too. Please go ahead with the next presentation.
Thank you very much. So for this, I am going to share my screen, and for those of you who have seen me share my screen before, I seem to mess it up every single time, so bear with me, but I think I'm going to get it right this time, so we shall see. There we go. Okay, so I'm going to be talking tonight about the District Scenario Modeler, and we're going to be covering a little bit about the District Scenario Modeler, so I'll be telling you what it is, and I'm also going to be telling you how to navigate and use the tool. Additionally, another key thing that I'll be focusing on is not just how to navigate the tool and how to use it, but also some real best practices for when the public or yourself are using this tool, best practices for drawing districts. So these are, these are things that we at Flow do when we're coming up with district maps, so I'll be focusing on those two areas. And then lastly, I'll also focus, there's an accompanying form that comes with the District Scenario Modeler to capture descriptions about the maps that are submitted, and so I'll go over that as well. So about the District Scenario Modeler, or the DSM, as we typically say, so, you know, this tool, there's a lot of information here. We've really done everything we can to try to simplify the use of it, but the reality is, as I mentioned last time in a meeting, that there's over 28,000 census blocks in San Diego County. There's a lot of information. So it, there's just a lot you have to do to work with this tool. So we do recommend that the DSM is used on a laptop or desktop computer. Technically, you can also use it on a tablet. Really technically, you could use it on a phone, but I wouldn't recommend that. It's really best to use this tool on your laptop or your desktop computer. Secondly, I want to note that drawing a complete district map really does require a time commitment. It's not something you can sit down and pull together in 10 minutes. It's something you're going to have to dedicate some time to. I would say if you're looking to sit down and draw a full district map, you need to plan to spend a minimum of a half an hour of your time. And, you know, most importantly here, I want to say that you don't need to use this tool or draw a district map for your input to be included in, in this process and considered in the redistricting process. It's really, the, the DSM is just one of many ways that you can be involved in the redistricting process. So whether you provide input through public testimony, through testimony at a public hearing, or if you submit an e-comment to the website, or if you draw a map of your community using the Community Builder tool, all of these things are going to be considered equally. So if this tool is not something that you are able to use for any number of reasons or you don't have the time to use, as a father of three small children, I can tell you, if I didn't do this for a living, I probably would not have the time to sit down and draw a complete district map with this tool. But that doesn't mean your voice isn't being heard. This is just one way that folks who are comfortable with using the tool can use it to provide their input, but as I mentioned, we have provided lots of other ways for people to provide input, and they will all be considered equal. As I go through this, I realize I completely skipped the previous slide. This is the new slide that was added and is not noted in the agenda. This slide I should have gone through before, and this side is in the agenda. I will cover it briefly. So the DSM is an interactive web-based tool that we designed to provide the public with access to mapping technology that can be used to draw district boundaries. The tool is built on, on top of two really well-known and established software platforms. One is Tableau and one is ArcGIS Online. Some of the metrics, like population balance and the demographic data, are instantly tabulated as the user draws. as the user draws district boundaries. And we designed this tool very specifically to make it easy and to facilitate the drawing of districts that preserve communities of interest. So we really try to make sure that the users have in their hands through this tool the information that they will need in order to draw lines that will preserve communities of interest. And I will show you that in just a few minutes here. So it also includes a form and that allows you, the users, to draw your map, but also tell us why you like that map. Tell us the things about that map that are most important to you. And most importantly here, last but not least, the tool is going to be available to the public from the IRC website beginning September 27. So although I'm doing this training tonight, there are still, we're still doing some vetting and their data will be, and the tool will be available on September 27. So with that, I'm going to get into the actual tool and sort of show you some of these things. Okay, so on the 27th, when you are on the IRC webpage and you you will see a link to the DSM. And when you click on that link, you're going to come to this landing page that you see here. Now, within this landing page, there are a number of, there are a number of things I want I want to make note of. And the first is this link right here to our user guide. Get to know this user guide. So if you click on the user guide, it's going to go through everything I'm going to go through tonight. And it's also going to have it all documented. And it's not just reading. We've included some animated GIFs so that you can actually see the actions that are happening. So this will be a really helpful reference for you, for members of the public, as you're using the tool. We also have a link to the Community Builder, because I anticipate some people will come here and realize that what they really want to do is draw their community. And that's what the Community Builder is for. You know, this tool shouldn't be used to draw just your community. It should be used to draw a complete district map, which I said, as I said before, is a bit more of a time commitment than drawing your community. So if you're looking to draw your community, please use the Community Builder tool. And then finally, we also have a technical support link here that you can click on. Opening this form. Opening this link will take you to this form that you can fill out and provide some information to us and someone from our team will get back to you. It may not be instantaneous, but we will respond to you as soon as we are able to. That said, before submitting technical support, I do ask that you review the user guide just in case it's an issue that or a question that we've addressed there. And I'll also mention that we will be updating that user guide throughout this process. So if we get questions that aren't in there and we realize we can answer, we'll update the user guide so the next time somebody asks that they can go there. So we do plan on updating that as we go along. Now, below these options here, you'll see that we do have these, the languages here. And what I'll say is right now, these are not linked. We are going to be provided, these will be links when you go to use the tool on on the 27th. These links will take you to a translated version of the district scenario model. This page, the landing page itself, can also be translated using this button here. And this is just like on the Compute Community Builder tool, you can click this button, select your language and and translate it. This is what the district scenario modeler looks like. And as you scroll down, you'll notice we have a tool. And then we also have the form that I mentioned, which will help you, where you can describe your map and then upload it and submit it to us and the IRC. Now, I'm going to demo the tool, but because I have no interest in battling for bandwidth with my children who are undoubtedly streaming the new Paw Patrol movie right now, I am going to go ahead and just show you, do this demo from a desktop version of this tool. There are a few very minor differences between this desktop version that I work in and the web-based version that will be available on the website. I will note those as I I get to them in this demonstration, but they are very slight. Okay, so this is the tool. We've got a big map, a bunch of numbers. Let's go through them. Across the very top, you'll notice we have three numbers in bold. This is the total population, the total number of districts and the ideal population. And of course, the total population divided by the number of districts equals this ideal population. Now, these numbers are some of the only things in this tool that are not going to change as you use the map. So below these numbers, we have a number of menu options down here, and I'll go through each of these. So the first option here is to choose your underlying base map. And so it's defaults to this streets view, which if you zoom in, which we will later on, you'll be able to see the streets much more clearly. But this is a basic streets map. And there is also a satellite view as well. So you can choose to use the satellite for your underlying base map if you would like. You may notice that it's a bit difficult to see anything with the satellite map at this zoom level. The satellite is really best used when you are working in a in detail, very zoomed in and close. Otherwise, especially for me, I certainly prefer the street view overall. But if you're looking for certain landmarks and things like that, that you're trying to identify when you're drawing your district boundaries, the satellite view can be very helpful. The next the next button here or dropdown menu here is the Edit Mode. And this is going to be very important. There are two options, View Existing Boundaries. And those will be, right now, the View Existing Boundaries are the existing boundaries of the supervisory districts in the county. However, that may change with springwards further down the line. But the main point here is that you're going to need to change this from the existing boundaries or the boundaries that are by default loaded into this tool with the option to draw new boundaries. Once again, I'll show you this as I actually use the tool in just a few minutes. There's also a filter that you can use to filter to one or more specific districts if you want to focus on just adjusting the boundaries in those areas. There is also, and this is important to note, a choose race or ethnicity data source. So there are a number of demographic demographic metrics in here that are broken out by race or ethnicity. And those are visible in these donut charts down here as well as in this table. And you have the option to view those demographic breakout numbers by either the total population or by the citizen voting age population. Now, these two values, the total population, citizen voting age population are two of the the numbers that come from the the PL 94171, 74191, I may have screwed that up, I apologize. Redistricting data summary files. They're also the two most commonly referred to numbers when we're looking at the demographic information. So those are currently as the default in default options for viewing that data in the tool. So moving away from these menu options, we will see we have this overall deviation, also known as the total district or total jurisdiction deviation, which is currently at 5%. And that number is the number we're ensuring is below 10%, but also trying to get to as close to zero as is feasible. Okay, so down below here, we have these, I call them the the donut charts. And they are a chart for each district. And each one includes the district number as well as the total population and the race and ethnicity demographic breakdown of that district. And when you hover on it, you'll notice that district does highlight location on the map. And then we also, to the right, have the district individual deviation from that ideal population. And that is provided in both a numeric format as well as in a percentage. Okay, so over here, the right side of the screen, this panel includes all of the tools, all of the features that are going to help you as you are drawing your district maps. These are the things that make it possible for you to draw a district map that's more than just population balanced, that is population balanced, but also takes into account preserving communities of interest. And so we have a few different filters and options here. One is to a a filter to look for specific race and ethnicity categories if you're trying to identify areas of your you know, of your community. And so in order to use this, you simply choose an option from the dropdown. And then below it, we have a filter. And so that filter is a slider. And as you slide this, you'll notice blocks disappearing. And what it is doing is it's basically just removing blocks that fall outside of your slider. So all the blocks remaining here have a population where the percent of that total population between 24.8% and 100% of the population in these blocks is is an Asian population. And you can see, if I move this down, it will continue to filter and we're seeing that we have the map will change and adjust as you move these filters around. I'm just going to slide them back to zero. And one thing I should note here is that when you're clearing the filter, you will see there's a little red X on the filter button. And if you click that, it'll just clear out your filter for you. Now, this tool can also be used. You don't have to use that slider. You can also just simply type in a value, but you do have to type it as desk. So if I wanted to go to 50%, I would type in 0.5. And I will go back and clear this out. So the next tool down here is to look for blocks by population category. So across this, we have the population each block. When you hover over a category, it will highlight the blocks where the population falls within that category. So right now is highlighting all the census blocks that have a population between 1 and 49 people. Now, the number that you see down here represents the total number of blocks that fall within that population category. And if I were to go and click in one of these boxes, the map won't just highlight, it will then filter to only include those blocks that fit within that those parameters. All right, now let's get to my favorite part of the tool. Under this headline that says Layers for Communicate, for Consideration, you can see we've gotten an option here that's selected, which is municipalities and unincorporated areas. You can see we also have an option for COIs submitted by the public. And when I choose one of these, you'll notice that this table down here populates with information. So with the option I just chose, that table is now including all of the communities of interest. Well, it's not all of, it's all of the, it will be all of. It is the communities of interest that are submitted right now. These are the communities of interest that were submitted through the Community Builder tool. However, that will not always be the case. We are working to have this incorporate the communities of interest that are submitted to us in any format. And that those will come in here. It does take, it's not instantaneous, but we will include all of the communities of interest, testimony, ecomments, anything that comes to us, they will go in there. Right now, we have the communities of interest that were submitted through the Community Builder as of I think early this week when I brought this data in for the first time. But that will be updated once again before the release. And then throughout this process, we will be working to include those communities of interest that were submitted through other formats from the community, other formats beside the Community Builder tool. Right now, this is showing you what we have collected in the Community Builder. Now, you'll notice that if I hover over any of these, it will highlight those specific areas. And it's also going to tell you, if I hover over, it's going to also provide you a right below or above this table, you can see it's also going to show the 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 description of the community that was submitted along with the the geography that was submitted. Now, you may notice there is a red X as well as a green checkmark. And what this is, these indicate is that the red X is telling you that this community of interest is split across multiple districts. And when you hover over it, you see a table that will show you the demographic breakdown for that split. So you can see that in this case, District 3 has 236,000 and District 5 has around 650,000. So you can see exactly how the communities of interest are split across districts. Now, the last thing I want to show you before we really get into using this tool is what happens when I click. So if I want to just look at a specific community of interest, I simply click on that check or X mark. And it will zoom in on the map and show you that community of interest where the census blocks are that it is contained in. And then below, I want you to notice this table, the Selection Detail table. So this is just going to provide you the demographic breakdown for whatever is in the map. And so in this case, we're seeing the demographic breakdown for this community of interest that was submitted through, submitted to the IRC. And you can see that demographic breakdown down here. Okay, so that's all great, but how do you actually use this thing? Let's go through that just a bit. So I'm going to go through what I consider a best practice in terms of mapping here. Now, when I am looking to draw a district map, to draw any map that includes boundaries, really. And I'm particularly if I'm working in an area the size of San Diego County. I don't look at the map overall and think of, you know, where do I want to put my lines? I try to do what I call mapping from the inside out. And what that means is I focus on the communities that I know I want to preserve and keep together in a district. And I assign them to a district and then I build the lines outward from that point. So an example, I'll give you an example here. If I were to do that in this case. So if I were using the tool and I said, okay, I'm going to use, start from these boundaries. And I'm just going to try to improve them a little bit by maybe uniting some of these communities within a single district. But the first thing that I have to do before I do anything is go up to that Edit Mode button. This is very important. You need to click from View Existing Boundaries to New Boundaries, Draw New Boundaries. And once it's made that change, I am ready to start making edits. So if I wanted to go and start mapping from the inside out and containing communities in a single district, I'm going to go over and use this Layers for Consideration option here. And I've got municipalities and unincorporated areas. And I'm going to go through this as my example for now. And so I'm going to scroll down and I'm going to see some of these and look for the ones that have that X. Because those are the ones that I know are currently split and that I would like to have be preserved within a single district. So here I can see this city of Santee here. It's split across districts 2 and 3. And the vast majority of the population in the city is in District 2. District 3 is just under 1,000 folks. This seems like a great opportunity to preserve this municipality in a single district. And so I'm going to go ahead and do that. In order to do that, I want to narrow my map down to the area I'm working in. So I'm going to click this X again, and it's going to filter the map to where I want to go. And brings me right down to the city of Santee and I can see the boundaries here. And it's pretty clear that there's one census block over here. It's got 928 people in it and it's in District 3 and it's the only one. I can kind of understand why this was split because that is a funny looking census block. And your boundary is going to look weird with this included. But at the same time, I'm going to personally, I care more about preserving this this city together than I do about having a funny looking boundary. That's for other people to decide ultimately, but we're going to do this for this case here. So if I want to go and take this particular census block and remove it from District 3 and assign it to District 2, I'm going to show you how I would do that. So a few things to know. When you're navigating the map, there are a few options. There's a zoom, which you can do this and it will zoom in. And there is a pan which will allow you to move around. If you need or are looking to move your map back to its original position, you uncheck this pushpin and you uncheck this pushpin and and this is something to note on the web based version that you will use. This is a home button. My version here, it's pushpin. I'm going to click it. It's going to zoom me back out to that position. Now, it's keeping it at Santee because I have this filter applied with by clicking on the X here. If I didn't, it would take me back out to the full San Diego County map. So that's moving around in the map. It's pretty basic. There's a zoom, there's a pan. You can also use this plus and minus zoom, but they're not that helpful. I would just use this and this. So when you're selecting blocks, there's also a few options here. There's a rectangular select, a radial selection and a lasso selection. I'm going to use those in another example in just a minute. But for this case, I don't need any of those because I'm only working with one block. And I want to remove the one block from District Three and assign it to District Two. So to do that, simply going to click on the block. And when I click, note that it does say always make sure you remove blocks from their current district before assigning them to a new one. So you got to do that. If you don't, nothing will happen. So I'm going to remove this block from the district it's in, which is District Three. And it's going to quickly do a little calculation to say, okay, that block's no longer in District Three. So where is it? Well, it's unassigned. And you can see that now that unassigned district has nine hundred and twenty eight people. As a result, the overall deviation is completely thrown off. That's okay. I'm going to hover back on it. And when it pops back up, I'm going to say, where did I want that to go? I want it to go in District Two. So I'm going to say click on add blocks to District Two. And add this block to District Two. And you will see that, oh, hey, not only did this red X turn to a green check to say that this community is now preserved in a single district. We also managed to lower the overall deviation by four by point two percent. So, great. All right. So that's an example, a brief example of what I mean by mapping by the inside from the inside out. Trying to identify the communities that you can preserve in a district and then you're trying to preserve in a single district and doing that before you end up drawing the rest of the boundaries. Now, after you've mapped from the inside out and preserved the districts that you're most interested in preserving, you're going to want to do some population balancing in all likelihood. And what I mean by population balancing is there's going to be a point where you're sort of trading census blocks between different districts in an effort to lower that overall deviation. So when you do that, you really want to focus on you want to take it a couple of districts at a time. And there are two key districts that you're focusing on. And that's going to be the districts that were used to calculate the overall deviation. And so that's the district with the greatest population, which in this case is District One. And the district with the lowest population, which in this case is District Four. So I'm sorry, the lowest population is District One and the greatest population is District Three. No. Five. Okay, I knew I had something wrong there. So the greatest population is District Three. It's late, I'm on the East Coast. The greatest population is District Three, the lowest population is District One. I can tell you here that it would be ideal if these two districts bored each other, but they don't. And so I can't just take blocks from District One and give them to District Three. That's not going to work out. However, I can see that District Two is much, there's a quite a delta between the, you know, amount of people over the ideal population for District Two and the amount under for District One. So I'm going to focus on trying to make some changes between District One and District Two, doing some trade offs there. So I'm going to go and I'm going to use my filter by district. And first I got to get rid of this all and oh, no, oh, the map's gone. Don't worry about it. It's okay. What I'm going to do is I just need to select the districts that I want again. I'm going to click on that. District One does take a little bit to think through this, but it will work. And then I'm going to look at District Three. Oh, that's not what I wanted to do. I'm going to unclick that. And then I'm going to click District Two because I'm going to trade between District One and District Two. And I'm going to look for some areas that I might be able to swap some population. And I zoomed into an area because I cheated and I looked at this beforehand. But as I zoom in, I can see there's this road here. It's Jumacher Road. And it is, you know, it looks like it's a fairly major road anyway. And there's a lot of population around here and I'm curious if maybe I could take some of the population that one doesn't have and some of the population that District Two does have and maybe move it over to balance this a little bit better. So in order to do that, I'm going to grab one of my tools here. I'm going to grab this lasso selection. And I'm just really kind of quickly going to draw a big circle or not even a circle, some weird shape in this area. And it's going to, this lasso is going to collect is going to select essentially all of those blocks that intersect with that polygon I've just drawn. And when I unclick and hold down the mouse to do that, you'll see that over here, it's going to calculate how much population was in that. This is about five thousand people. Well, that looks pretty good because two is currently over by just about five thousand. And one is under by twenty one thousand. So let's see what happens if I say, you know what, this looks like something I could change. I'm going to remove the blocks from District One. It did nothing because I screwed up. I'm going to remove the blocks from District Two. And what happened? They're gone. Well, that's because I don't have my unassigned in here and they're no longer assigned. So I've got to put them back in. So I assign them because I did that, I have to grab them again. That's all right. That's easy to do. I'm going to take these and I'm going to add them to District One. When I add them to District One, calculated, oh, and I missed one. I could tell I missed one because my deviation is still a little crazy. So I'm grab this one that's still unassigned. Add that to District One. I'm going to do that. Hey, we're down to four percent. In order to clear that, I just had to click on it again and it unselects everything. So now I'm down, my deviation is at four percent. Okay, so I know I've I've gone through a lot and that really is just a small example, but those are the two most common things you're going to do. You're going to be trading population between blocks and you're going to be mapping from the inside out, which is where you're trying to preserve those communities. Now, I'm going to jump ahead here. And so when you have gone through and created your map and when you are done, you then have a form. And in this form, some basic information, but it's information we want to get about the map you've submitted. So you're going to type in your name and this is required, John. Last name. And I'm lying because I don't actually live in San Diego County, so I don't live in one of these districts. If I didn't know, I could click on this link and it's going to take me to the counties, find your district application. I'm going to tell something about the map, say this map is awesome. Do a few exclamation points. And then I want to share, I want to paste my maps share link here. What does that mean? So what you're going to do is click on that and it'll tell you, you're going to click on this little share button. This is going to pop up, you're going to copy it and paste it. All right, I can do that. So I'm going to go up here, copy, click on this, copy the link, copy, scroll down, paste. And I'm good. I can submit. But before I do that, I want to also make note that if you have another map, because you don't have to submit a district map through the district scenario model. I'd like it to, makes my life a little easier, but you don't have to. It's fine. We are going to accommodate anybody who wants to submit a map any way they can. And so if you have a drawing of a map that you made or a picture of a map that you've drawn on, you can upload that file simply by clicking on this and selecting the appropriate file. And then it will upload it and you hit submit. You can still, we'd still like to describe it and fill out the other information, but you can submit that. And when you do, you're going to get a friendly little message that says, hey, thanks for sitting, data's been sent successfully. Thanks, great. And you're good to go. So that is the tool. I know I went through it a bit quickly and I know there's a lot there. I'm happy to take any questions in the time that we have remaining, but I do want to emphasize again that this tool, there is a lot here, right? There's a lot of information. And that's why this tool is just one of many different ways that you, and this goes for both commission, folks in the commission and the members of the public. So it's just one way to provide your input. If this isn't something you think you're going to want to use or be able to use, that's okay. We have other tools and your information will be considered equally. You don't have to use this tool if you don't want to. You don't have to submit a full district map. You can use public testimony, e comments, you can use the Community Builder application. There are a lot of ways to inform this process. You don't have to use that this tool. That said, if this is something you want to do and is valuable, we have it here and we are, we can help you use it. That's why we have that user guide, which please do reference, and that is why we have that support form, which please use after referencing the user guide. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. So thank you.
Well, thank you, John, and thanks to everyone at Flow for developing such a great presentation and helping us get ready for the intense work we're going to be facing. I would note that the preparation time you mentioned needed for working on the map is about the amount of time for two episodes of Paw Patrol. So good use of time for you and for the rest of us. I also want to just mention for members of the public, John's examples were, of course, just illustrative. We'll be looking at a lot of different cases, but you can see how the numbers, I think, work very well when you move the census blocks the right way. All right, so we will take, look for public comment first and then turn to commissioner discussion. David, at this point, I'd like to turn to members of the public who have requests to speak. Are there any requests?
This item, the commission would be, would welcome your comments. Those present who wish to address the commission, please come forward to the microphone. And for those participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. So you'll have three minutes to address the commission. If you are agreeable to doing so, please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
And I I do want to note, this portion of the discussion is focused on this presentation on the issues. We'll have the public hearing later, starting at five thirty. But if you do have questions or comments on this presentation and how it's used, we more than are happy to hear from you. Please.
Esther Sanchez, City of Oceanside. And my question's starting with, when you use this tool, and first of all, thank you so much for coming up with a tool that the public can use. When you use this, can, would you be able to submit, say, a map for District Five or would you have to do an entire, for the entire county? Because I noticed that you were talking about balancing and, you know, you you did that in a different district. So would it be possible to submit, using this tool, submit just for District Five? Or would you have to work on the other districts? Because that would, that would be a whole lot of work.
John?
Yes, absolutely. The one thing I would ask is that you describe that in, just in the note form that say, this is just a map of District Five. You'll notice that the deviation won't be right. That's okay. That's why we'd ask you to note that. I do want to say that we 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 understand that every map that's submitted to us has value to it. So just because something doesn't have, doesn't meet the deviation, we're not going to like throw it out. We're going to look at that map and we're going to see what was, what is the piece of information that's valuable from that? Because there's value whenever, if somebody sits down and takes the time to draw any map, that's valuable and we know that and we're going to get that information. So no, you don't have to draw a complete district map. But if you can just, once again, use that description to help us make sure that we're gathering the right information from it, that would be really helpful.
Okay, and the second question I have is, you know, you said that this will be available for the public starting on the twenty seventh of September. What is a hard deadline for the public to submit maps? That would be considered prior to the demographer you beginning to show to show the public and the IRC commission the the maps, I think you, something about spring maps or something like that. What is the deadline? Would it be like the thirtieth? Or, I mean, I think October seventh is when the spring max will first be used. So what would be the deadline before that for the public? Understanding that we're going to first have access to this tool on the twenty seventh. How much time do we get to be able to submit maps using this tool?
And John, I want to jump in here on a couple of points. First, I should have made clear upfront, it, because this is public comment. Just for future speakers, please offer all your comments first. Within the timeline, it's perfectly okay. And that way I'm I'm sure we'll get to them, but it'll make life easier for our clerk to keep line of the time. Was that your final question? Good. I do want to turn to John for additional comment, but I can say you will hear more in tonight's regular meeting, probably after the public hearing, about how our timeline is going to work and how maps will be considered. But I I think it's fair with both regard to the springboard maps and the draft draft maps. But I asked John to confirm, we'll be looking for for input for several weeks. And I don't know that anything will be disadvantaged by submitting it a little later. There's no real deadline. The springboard maps are probably going to be drawn more from data and public comment as such to date, but we'll, we'll incorporate everything we can whenever we get it. John, is that a fair way to put it?
That's exactly correct, Chair Bane. We'll be incorporating data as we get it. And it's not going to disadvantage anything. Of course, if you can get it in early, the earlier you may see it, but that doesn't mean it's, if you do it later, it's still going to get in there. So there is no real deadline in that sense.
My name is Dr. Timothy Byalash. Thanks for having this. It's really a nice map. I hope it's useful. My question is whether the map accommodates demographic information such as housing type of ownership, first homes, foreign ownership, some measure of wealth, those kinds of economic indicators. Thank you.
John?
It it does not. It includes right now the data that I showed as the standard data. That is what we default to. And that is what we will be providing. There's the possibility that we could provide other fields that come with the redistricting data files if that is, if we are directed by the commission to do so. Otherwise, it includes our sort of basic standard demographic data that I showed this evening.
And I would just add that we will certainly be looking for any of that kind of commentary, particularly with regard to communities of interest. I think we've already had some input on those kind of economic factors, particularly with regard to economic development in previous public hearings, and you're welcome to submit a comment just on that without necessarily submitting a recommended map or anything like that. But we'll do our best to address all of that as we can.
Sorry, I'm Justin. I live in Vista. And my question for the IRC in this presentation in particular is, how do you weigh who presents the maps? For example, if people are drawing maps about North County or South County or East County, you look at the person presenting the map and inconsiderate or weigh things. For example, if a nonprofit or a private corporation or, you know, a random community of interest gave you a map, would you look at it with a little bit more scrutiny or how do you objectively weigh maps? I'm sorry if that's like a silly question. I didn't even know what a border supervisors was like two years ago, so I'm trying to get with it.
Thank you, John.
So I'll say that this tool is not, we're not going to wait anything. This tool is going to take the map and incorporate the data the same as all of our other tools. And we are going to take the data that we have and provide that data to the commission in a way that they can understand it. So we certainly So we certainly will not be providing any weights. What we will be doing, for instance, something that comes up in this area quite a bit is, well, what happens if we have one community of interest that people, you know, were identified 20 times and another that was identified one time? Does it really mean that one gets 20 times more weight than the other? No. What it means is that the commission needs to know that there were 20 instances where this community was identified as a community of interest, then this one had one. And then the community, and then the commission will be looking at all the other information to make their decisions and how to do that. There's no sort of technological or mathematical weight that will be applied to any of this. It is simply used to provide all the data that we think is important for the commission to have in order to make informed decisions and to direct us to draw draft maps and eventually a final map.
We do have one individual participating remotely who's raised a virtual hand. Rob Howard, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it, commissioners. My question was really about the process of developing the maps. I, all, all the information was great, but I've got a few people that are trying to put maps together that really just want to know, can I just literally select cities and put them together to create a map, say, for a particular district? In other words, all of the others' information is great, but I think at the 30,000-foot level, I'd like to be able to just select cities. I want to go Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, Fallbrook, whatever, all the way out to Escondido, and then see what the numbers are, and then add in cities to build the population. Does the new map tool provide for the ability to build a map based on city populations? Does that question make sense and how I'm really trying to address that?
I love that question. That, that is, uh, that's kind of a perfect example of what I mean by mapping from the inside out. And so you'll notice in that there is that option for lay, I, I think it's called layers for consideration, and it does include municipalities as an option. And so you could just filter by clicking on it to those municipalities and then assign all of those blocks from the municipality to the district of your choosing. Go through all the municipalities, whatever you want, assign them to the districts that you want, and then see what happens. And then you might move on to the second area, which is like, okay, now we've got to see how to balance the population. So that's a great question, and really that, that method of finding the areas you want to preserve, assigning them to districts, and then working, is, that's how I do it when I am drawing districts.
We may have had one more in-person request that I cut off. Sir, you have three minutes to address the commission.
My name is Jan Riha, and I apologize for being late to your presentation. I thought, based on what I read, that it's actually started at 5:30. My question has, I have a question and a request, and the question is, how can the members of the public get more information, more help in using this wonderful tool? And the request is, 2020 census provided lots of information, economic population clusters. If, could the developer provide a way of importing some of that data by publishing some standards where that information could be brought in and evaluated in the creation of the public maps to be submitted to the commission?
Sir, would you mind repeating your name for the audio record?
Jan, J A N, Riha, R I H A.
Thank you.
And John, I'll take the first question and turn to you for the second. On the first question, sir, I'd ask you to, because you're here in person, to talk to some of our staff right afterwards, and they'll be happy to show you where things are on the map. John has laid out where some of the technical help is on the website itself. We'll be able to go over that with you and make sure it's clear, and that's available for any member of the public. If you have a question afterwards, please feel free to contact staff by email, phone, or the various other means we have. John, did you want to address the other question about data a little bit?
Yeah, and similar to the, the prior question, there are other data that the census provided, but there's also data that the census provides specifically through the redistricting data files and to the statewide database provides as well, which is really what the data we need to be using for this process. So right now, the tool does have just sort of our default data sets that we put in there. There are other data sets available through the statewide database at the census block level that potentially could be added, but we would do so, once again, at the direction of the commission and with input from legal counsel as well.
We have a final public speaker. Again, this is for the mapping tool, not for mapping in, in general, the pre-public hearing. You have three minutes to address the commission.
My name is Joy Frew. I live in Fallbrook. And my question is a result of Rob Howard's question and the answer to it about municipalities. Similarly, can you also select an unincorporated area such as Fallbrook, which used to be called a township, rather than just individual census blocks within that, the way you can for municipality? Thank you.
So the answer to this question is yes. However, we do need to make sure that we have a record of that community as a community of interest. So I would recommend that someone from your community use the Community Builder tool, where you can just draw a basic polygon around your community, and then that will be incorporated and will be an option to choose from in the tool. You can also, you just told us that community here in this comment, so that may very well get into the tool too. So we will be adding those, like I said, it is a process, it takes a little bit of time to get something that's mentioned in the public meeting as a community of interest, to get that sort of thing into the tool. But the answer is yes, those sorts of things can be incorporated in the tool. They will be incorporated into the tool throughout this process. What I will say is that because we have to use the census, we use the census block to draw, to draw the boundaries. And so our model that brings these in is going to identify all the census blocks that fit within the boundary of that community of interest. It may not be the exact same boundary, because the blocks may not line up exactly with your lines, but it is going to include all the areas of population within that through the census blocks. The shape might look a little different, but it's all of the area, all of those census blocks that are within any community of interest that has been identified.
Not seeing any further movement in the chamber for public comment and not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on item number six, Chair Bane.
Thank you very much, David, and thank you for all the comments. Thank you, fellow commissioners, for your patience in letting us have more of a question and answer with the public, but I think it's useful and I think it's good to have that recorded for all of us to be able to benefit from those, not only from the questions answered themselves, but from the kind of insights and recommendations and topics involved. Now, it is 5:19. We have a great deal of regular business to do, as well as the firm 5:30 start for the public hearing. What I'd like to do is at least recognize Commissioners Prugliak and Pons, along with any other commissioners who want to ask questions, noting that we really have to take the break starting at 5:25 latest. And then I promise I'll give an opportunity for questions after the break, but they will need to be very limited and very direct. I say that in part because I'm sure John and the Flow team, as well as IRC staff, will be available to commissioners as needed for follow-up questions. So that's the way I'd like to proceed. With that, I have Commissioner Prugliak, Commissioner Pons, Commissioner Hanson, and Commissioner Serbin. Again, please respect the time we've got. We've got about six minutes, so I'll ask you to be very direct with your questions. Commissioner Prugliak, please.
If you have built a district model through another tool like District Builder or Draw My California Community, that is exportable, is it possible to import it into this tool and then work from it? Rather than just import it as an image or anything like that, but actually import the raw file and work with it?
No. If you, you are, you can export that data and then bring it in to the tool and submit it to us. I don't believe we would be able to get with the current functionality, set that up where you would then be able to alter that map from the file. We could load that file in and include it. You know, we would include it in developing springboards and all the other things, but we couldn't then push it back out where you would be able to then access it in the DSM and then continue on from there.
Thank you. Commissioner Pons?
Yes, thanks, John, for this tremendous brief. My comment goes to the issue of conversion. We've got over 390 contributions from the public about how they want to see things change or considered. And most of them are in verbal submissions, written testimonies. How can we take that information, these verbal contributions, map those out, and then recreate it to show that contributor that that information has been considered and is visualized, so they can go, yes, I see what you considered my verbal comments, and I can see how it was converted to an illustrative contribution to the map drawing process?
So we are actively working on that. The approach that we are planning to take right now is to essentially internally have potentially San Diego County staff help us with this, but also Flow and potentially ABSD, maybe, help us with taking the, those public comments that have been submitted, entering them into the form of the Community Builder and identifying representative, representative geography within that. Like I said, we're still working through this process, but it's just something we know needs to be done and are actively working on finding the most efficient way to do so, because we want to do just that, Commissioner. We want to be able to show like, yes, you said this in a meeting in here. Here's a map and you can see where it is. And so that is something we are actively working on, and that will, that's something will be done.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I want to thank you too for this great tool. I was interested in the map that you showed, that area of Santee, because we got a comment from a couple of, or three different people, I think, about that area. And I was wondering what would have happened if they had not bothered to comment, would we have missed that? So could you tell me again how you saw that? What was the X or something that was there? That that little area will?
Absolutely. So in, that is in part by chance that, but the way I, I work is I, when I, that X, any community of interest, any municipality, anything that you pull from that dropdown of layers for consideration, if it has an X, it means it's split across districts. Some places have to be, just due to population, not all of them. Santee was one that I think the population was around 65,000 or so. And so when I was looking for good examples, I saw that that was a good example because, to do in a, in a brief presentation, because there was, it was split and the vast majority of the population was in a single district, and then there was just one block in, in, in another district. So.
That was clever of you. That area had been annexed over the last 10 years somehow, and that's how it happened. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Serbin?
Thank you, and thank you, John, for the presentation. So just to confirm, will the springboard maps incorporate data from the DSM submissions when the DSM goes live?
Yes.
Okay. And did you say that there are additional demographic layers available? Additional demographic data layers that are available but not yet, I guess, entered into the DSM database such that we'd be able to display them?
So, yeah, the, there are additional data layers that are provided by the statewide database. And I would want, we, they can potentially be added to the tool. I say potentially because Flow isn't going to unilaterally make any decision of it about adding fields to, which fields to include in the tool. We would want to do that at a specific direction of the commission with some guidance from legal counsel before adding anything other than sort of our default standard that we put in there. So yes, there, there are other fields available, and yes, they could potentially be added, but it's not something Flow will, will just do without some, you know, the direction from the, from the commission and guidance from legal.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. Thank you, commissioners, for really useful questions, not just brief questions, really useful. All right, it's 5:25. We're going to go ahead and suspend this part of the meeting. We'll return to the IRC regular business after the public hearing. John, if possible, I'll ask you to be around after the public hearing, just in case there are a few more follow-up questions. For now though, I'll ask commissioners to please take a very brief break, because we really do need to be back in four minutes. With that, I'm going to recess this meeting until 5:30, when the pre-mapping public hearing will begin. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Noting that the time is now five thirty-one, and I think we still have a quorum. Yes, I'll call this public hearing to order. Commissioners and members of the public, thank you for joining us for this pre-mapping public hearing of the County of San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission, also known as the IRC. It's a great honor to be with you here today and have all of you with us as we conduct the next of our pre-mapping public hearings to hear from you, the public, about your communities of interest and other issues of concern. I want to note that this is a public hearing, which includes a legal requirement that the commission may not discuss or take action on public input offered today during this meeting. We can, however, ask brief clarifying questions and request an item based on this hearing be added to the agenda of a future formal IRC meeting. In other words, it's not that we're not interested, it's that we take your input and then we will address it as we go forward. But I promise you, your input will be taken seriously. I also want to note for the record that today's hearing is specifically designated for District Five per our legal requirement to hold at least one public hearing in each of the county's five districts. That said, we welcome any and all comments today on any part of the county, including members of the audience who are here in person, as well as our virtual participants. Again, today's hearing is part of a series of IRC public hearings intended primarily as listening sessions. Our purpose here today is to listen and learn as much as we can about your communities. This information is critical for the IRC's work and drawing new boundaries for each election of the five members of the County Board of Supervisors for the next ten years. That makes it all the more important for us to hear from the public at these public hearings, which are intentionally planned and scheduled to come before we begin our formal line drawing, map drawing work in October. Let me ask now our IRC clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David.
Thank you, Chair Bame. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public who wish to speak to the commission during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at san diego county.gov/redistricting. We ask that individuals who wish to address the commission complete a form in advance for planning purposes. Individuals participating remotely are asked to submit an online request, and all individuals wishing to speak in person can complete a physical speaker slip. Staff do have speaker slips available. Having said that, all timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting, either in person or remotely, will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Chair Bame?
Thank you, David. We now move to a roll call. We're Commissioners. David, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Chair Bame.
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina.
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Dostal.
Here.
Commissioner Hansen. Commissioner Inman.
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Pons.
Here.
Commissioner Russ's absence is excused. Commissioner Serbin. Thank you, Chair Bame. We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. To start us off tonight, I will turn to Commissioner Chen to begin the presentation that we'll have before we hear from you, the public. Chris, please.
Thank you, Chair Bame. One quick housekeeping, bathrooms are through that door, straight back. All right. First off, we're going to provide refresher on redistricting. All of us here live, eat, and breathe redistricting. In case you don't, we'll go over briefly what it is to a little bit more than what David's already done. Second, we will explain what to expect in this redistricting pre-mapping public hearing tonight. Third, we're going to provide a brief overview of our Community Builder tool. That's a way for you to provide inputs to us. And finally, and most importantly, it will be your turn to give us your inputs. We appreciate you taking your time out of your evening tonight to be here with us. We do value your input and your participation is very important to us. And then finally, you will see, I think there are blue cards on the seats out there. We want to understand who's attending these public hearings and we want to ensure we reach as many people as possible. So if you would, please fill out those postcards on your seats and hand them out, hand them back in to us on your way out. We'd appreciate that. If you are online, please visit the website to fill out the voluntary survey. All right. Redistricting, as David already mentioned, the federal government does a census every ten years. And based on that census data, we update the districts. So you've probably heard of the State Redistricting Commission, you've heard about city redistrict commissions. We are the County Redistrict Commission, and as David mentioned, our role is to create the five supervisor districts in San Diego County. The, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So when we do that, we have to follow legally several criteria. One is to have a reasonably equal population. That's actually in the U.S. Constitution. So that's probably the main thing we have to look at, the first thing we look at, even though all of these criteria are important, we have to comply with all of them. One is to make sure that all the districts have reasonably equal populations. Second is to comply with the Voting Rights Act so that minority groups can make sure that they are fairly represented. Third is to be contiguous. We can't have little islands out here and there, so we want each district to be contiguous. Fourth, we want to minimize the division of cities, neighborhoods, and communities of interest. And we will talk more about what a community of interest is and how you can help us define those. And then fifth, we want them to be geographically compact, and that's regarding population density. We want to make sure that our districts make sense from a geographic compactness perspective. What we may not do, and part of why we are an independent commission, we may not consider the place of residence of any incumbent or political candidate, and we will not favor or discriminate against an incumbent political candidate or political party. So we want to try and be apolitical as we can be. Next slide, please. We have, in addition to those criteria, a couple more. One is that at least three districts shall include unincorporated territory. If you look at that slide, you'll see that all that stuff in the kind of the light yellow, that's all unincorporated. So the vast part of San Diego's territory really is unincorporated. And at least three of our districts of the five have to have unincorporated territory. Two of them must be primarily unincorporated areas. So you'll see there, there are eighteen cities in San Diego. They're in various colors on that map. And we need to work with those to make sure that as we create our five districts, we meet all the criteria on the previous page, plus these criteria. So it's quite a balancing act to make sure that we meet all these different criteria as we draw these boundaries. Next slide, please. And then you'll see District Five, this is kind of just an overview of current District Five. And it's, it's, it's very diverse. I live in District Five, I live in Carlsbad. District Five goes from the desert to the ocean. It's got agriculture, it's got high tech, it's got theme parks, it's got a military base. It's got Indian reservations, American Indian reservations. So it's really very diverse right now. And I, I for one, value the diversity, and we just wanted to give you this to give you a feel. I know you all live here, you're probably well aware of it, of what's in District Five right now. We've seen inputs that talk about what our plans are for redistricting. And I would say at this point, we're going with an open book. We're going to take a look at the census data and we're going to create districts. A lot of people say, keep it as it is. We haven't made any predisposed decisions on what the district's going to look like. But I will say that at the moment, just being a resident of District Five, I certainly value the diversity of it. All right, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Garcia, pleased to take the next step.
Thank you, Commissioner Chen. And I want to thank everybody who's here in person and also attending virtually. So I'm going to talk for a moment about why redistricting matters and why it's important. And you may, you may, by virtue of being here, already know that it's important. But redistricting matters first because how maps are drawn and how communities and neighborhoods get grouped together or get separated can affect whose voices are heard on Election Day. And as Chair Bame said, that will last for a decade. Redistricting done properly ensures that communities have a fair opportunity to elect a representative of their choice. In our case, the IRC's case and for the county, we will draw new district boundaries for the five members of the Board of Supervisors, the governing body of the, of the County of San Diego. And you can see on this slide the county's budget for the current fiscal year. They just adopted a budget of over seven billion dollars. And you can see a small sample of the responsibilities of the board. The, you know, the authority that they have to allocate resources for a number of things that you see on this slide. So the Board of Supervisors are responsible for making decisions about how this budget gets allocated and your ability to have a fair chance at electing a supervisor who represents you is why redistricting is so important. Next slide. So how will the commission gather information to draw those new boundaries? Well, it comes primarily from two sources. First, we will, we have the 2020 census data, which came from the 2020 census count. And in a moment, we'll look, we'll take a quick peek at some of those numbers. But secondly, and you've heard a lot about this tonight, and for those of you who came early, you heard a presentation from our demographer, we need and we will use public input, information we gather from you to help us learn about and understand communities of interest. And you've heard that term now, if you've been here for a while, several times. So let's move to the next slide and talk a little bit about what a community of interest is. A community of interest, and sometimes we call it a COI, is a contiguous population. So it means that they're together, right? And it's a, it's a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be grouped together within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. Communities of interest are not defined by their relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. Little bit more about COIs. A COI might be defined because that population shares a common culture or a common language. But there are many other ways to define a COI. A neighborhood that is, we've, we've seen this example, I'm going to use this example. A neighborhood that is, is adjacent to or near an airport, let's say, a local airport. Those, that community might define themselves as a COI because they share common interests pertaining to dealing with the impacts or effects of living near an airport. So that would be one way to define a COI. Information about COIs comes from you, the public, because we get a lot of data from the census. But the census data doesn't necessarily tell us about issues and concerns that bring a community together. So just briefly, I'm going to go over some questions that you might ask yourself to, to help you identify whether you are part of a COI and you might want to tell us about your COI. Does your neighborhood share certain celebrations or traditions like street festivals or parades? Are there important places where your community gathers, like parks or community centers? Does your community have a history? Are you part of a community who has issues that have not been adequately addressed by your elected representatives? Has your community come together to advocate for important services like better schools, roads, or health centers? So those are just some examples of how you might, how COIs might be identified and how you might want to tell us about your COI. But public hearings like this one today are expressly offered for the purpose of hearing from the public about their community so that we have this information when we begin drawing boundaries and so that we can understand those COIs and, and try to keep them together, right? That's our goal. So on the slide, you'll see ways that you can provide public input. And of course, you can come to a public hearing, you can come to any of our meetings, whoops. You can go to our website to get information on all of our meetings. You can submit written testimony at any time via email or regular mail. You can draw a map. You can use the Community Builder tool. Beginning on the twenty-seventh of September, you, there will be another tool called the District Scenario Modeling Tool that you can use. Any way that you can think of that you can tell us about your tool, provide it to us and we will accept it in any way that you, that's easiest for you. Provide as much detail as you can about your community and the characteristics and issues that bind you together and tell us why you should not be separated. Next slide. So we talked earlier, the demographer, our consultant, our demographics consultant was, did a sort of workshop on a new tool that we're going to have available on our website. But this one is already there. It's called the Community Builder Tool and it's specifically designed to help you tell us about your community, about your COI. So you just go to our website, click on the Community Builder Tool button, and then click the, once you get to the next page, you click on the Launch Community Builder Tool. And we encourage members of the public to use this tool to help us gather the data that we can't find from the census data or other sources. Our demographics consultant, Flow, has tried to make this tool as accessible and user-friendly as possible. I think when you get to the website, you just need to follow the steps on the screen and, and it will walk you through how to, how to provide that COI information and submit it. Next slide. All right. So now let's take a moment to talk about the actual census data. This table shows both 2010 and 2020 unadjusted population totals. I believe they're unadjusted population totals for the county. And we just heard earlier that the adjusted, and I won't go any details about what the difference is between unadjusted and adjusted. But just know that the, the numbers have changed, changed just a little bit because we just, on September twentieth, received adjusted population totals. You can see on the slide a column titled Ideal District Population. This is the total number of, this is the total population in the county divided by five because we have five districts, and that gives us the ideal district population. And it says on the slide that that number is around a little over six hundred and nineteen thousand people back in 2010, but because of population growth, the ideal number for each district is now around six hundred and sixty thousand. Okay? Then you'll see a number called Overall Range, and that is the range of deviation among all the districts from the actual population in each district and its ideal. So, let's see. Just to give you a little more information, we arrive at the percent deviation by taking the district population and dividing it by the ideal population. And our goal is to get the percent deviation as close to zero as reasonable. You can see that the 2010 districts do have reasonably equal population because these are what the districts look like right after redistricting. And of course, they were trying to get as close to that ideal number as possible. Over time, however, with population growth, the, the deviation has gotten greater. And so you can see that in, in 2020, the overall range is a higher number than it was in 2010. And for each district, you can see that the percent deviation has also gotten greater in, in each of the districts. Next slide. So this table shows the population changes from 2010 to 2020, both in absolute numbers. So we increased by a little over two hundred thousand residents. And, and it also shows it as a percentage. So we grew by about six point six percent. District Three grew faster than the county, increasing in size by eight point six percent. Districts One and Four grew slower than the county as a whole. District One by only five point two percent and District Four by even less at four point nine percent. And with that, I think we've had our fill of numbers. Thanks for your attention and patience as I went through all that. I'm going to pass it over to Commissioner Brown, who will tell us a little bit more about redistricting. Thank you. Thank you for coming here, by the way. We can't do this without you, so. By law, the County of San Diego IRC, we're going to look at slide number fourteen. We're required that we must hold public meetings as a, as a commission. We have regularly scheduled IRC meetings twice monthly, and we gather public testimony through public hearings all before we draw maps so that we can learn about the communities and especially about communities of interest. We also have an obligation to draw draft maps and to conduct more public meetings on those draft maps. And lastly, after we've gone through a public transparent process, we will adopt the final map that will be used for the County Board of Supervisors' elections for the next decade. We are an independent commission. I want to stress independent. We are citizen volunteers. We offer.
We operate completely independently from the influence of our elected officials. And we are responsible only to you, the public, in our duty to draw fair and accurate maps for the county. Next slide, please. We have scheduled eight pre-mapping public hearings, including one in each district. You'll see we're already down to the seventh one tonight in Vista. So we only have one more hearing, which will be next week in Spring Valley. We've had two for District Five already, one in Carlsbad and one here. The schedule is also posted on our website, drawyourcommunity.com. Next slide, please. Here is a timeline that shows the activities and the timing that the IRC is planning from now until the final map is adopted. We are currently in the pre-mapping public hearing stage through the end of this month, another week. The U.S. Census Bureau released the raw data to the state some time ago. And that data has been processed by the state to create a California's official redistricting database, which was released to us on September 20th. So we can get to work now with it. We've been doing quite a bit of preparation in advance of this, doing several meetings. So now the beginning of the drawing of the draft maps happens shortly after, in early to mid-October. Each draft map will be published for public comment. And we'll also be holding at least two public hearings during this map drawing phase to hear from the public about the proposed new districts. So even though we've gone past and we've started drawing the maps, that's not necessarily the end of it. You still have quite a bit of say in that. If you don't like what we've come up with, let us know. So finally, we'll adopt the final map for the county. And the deadline for that final map adoption is December 15th. Then it's a done deal after that. Okay, next slide, please. We'd like you to participate and stay involved. If you have questions or comments about anything regarding redistricting, it doesn't have to be just about the communities of interest. You can contact us. The slide here shows us how you can contact us. You may want to take a photograph of that. It gives you information about our website, Community Builder Tool, frequently asked questions, emails, and a request to subscribe to our newsletter, meeting schedules, and agendas. Everything is documented right there. You can access it. Next slide, please. This concludes the overall presentation to kick off this pre-mapping public hearing. And now we'll get to the heart of why we are here. It's to listen to you, the public. At this time, I'd like to turn to our clerk, David Hall, to tell us about any public speakers that have signed up to present to us. David?
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. And I would like to note for the audio record before I begin that Commissioner Serbin is present. We do have 22 individual speakers who have requested to address the commission in person. We also have six individuals who have requested to address the commission remotely. I'd also like to note that we've received 94 ecomments and one letter for this hearing that either have been or will be distributed to the commission and posted online. The commission will begin by hearing from those in person who have submitted requests to speak. Next, I'll call on those who are participating remotely who have submitted requests to speak. Then we'll hear from any remaining public comment from those present. Even if you haven't filled out a speaker slip or choose not to give your name, the commission would welcome your comments. Finally, we'll hear from any remaining public comment from those participating remotely. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the commission. I'll begin by calling the in-person speakers who have submitted a request to speak form. When your name is called, please come to the podium. If you're amenable to doing so, please state your name for the record as you begin your comments. Again, you'll have three minutes to address the commission. You'll see a timer on the screen in front of you. We'll begin with Pia Romano, followed by Michael Hefner.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Pia Romano, and I'm a Vista resident as well as a board member of South Vista Communities. District Five should consist of the more urban areas, which include Vista, Oceanside, Escondido, San Marcos, Carlsbad, as well as McClellan Palomar Airport. These areas are part of the 78 Economic Corridor and the ones most impacted by the airport. A District Five without Carlsbad would disenfranchise those other cities from a voice and their common interests. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Michael Hefner, followed by Esther Sanchez.
Hello, my name is Michael Hefner, and I am from Bonn-Saul here in North County. We were privileged to be able to have Neil, I'm going to mess up his last name, Fornacelli or Fornacelli, speak to our community up in Bonn-Saul and everything. So he was able to give us everything about the redistricting. So we really appreciate that. What I'm here is just to be able to ask that we have very minimal changes in North County. I did see that we have about 7,218 people that were kind of over within, on your slide, and then the slide earlier today was 2,891 or 1.2%. North County, as those that are here in San Diego, is a very unique county. It was mentioned earlier that we have a lot of farming, agriculture here. We have a lot of the Indian reservations. So you talked about the COI that is very unique to North County because we do have the Indian reservations that are up here. We also have, like I said, the farming and everything. And we pull from Oceanside and Vista and Escondido, even though that's not part of District Five. But we do have the farming up there, Valley Center, up in Fallbrook and everything. So it's very important to be able to have those trades within that community for agricultural purposes and everything to be able to stay within those, that community. I was kind of surprised to see that there is some splits that do happen within the cities. I think you brought up Spring Valley, I think it was, or... And so I was kind of surprised to see that there were some splits there within the cities. If we do have to split, I would suggest, instead of going to the North County part, because we're going to have to try to find 7,000 people to try to get into a different county, you may want to go either towards Encinitas area, along that beach area. I would imagine that they wouldn't have as much farming or agricultural through there. And if you needed to draw more to the District Five and everything, I would look at Escondido and their agricultural and farming area to go into District Five if you're having to take away too much down in that beach community over there. So that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing, listening to me.
Thank you. Esther Sanchez, followed by Sharon McKeeman.
Good evening, Esther Sanchez, Oceanside. And I have spoken to you before, last Saturday. I rise again because I have been spending more time on this. And I'm really beginning to realize how intensely critical this process is and what you all are going to be, what you all are doing. And I so appreciate that you have stepped up to this because it is going to be very difficult. The more I look at this, I mean, I've spent most of my 65 years in North County, except for going away to college, come back, law school, come back, and really done a lot of my community organizing here, here. Because this is home. And so if you see North District Five, it has looked substantially, just, you know, for all these decades, the same. Except for 20 years ago, Carlsbad was split in half to try to avoid having one candidate that was Bud Lewis to run for District Three. And also with respect to Escondido and trading that for Rancho Santa Fe. So this is an opportunity to fix that, you know, that kind of gerrymandering that happened because it was mostly based on a result-oriented kind of, you know, who, how can I get elected type questions, which we can't, you know, think about here. Our biggest concern for the Latino community, and that's what I'm stepping up for, the community of interest for the Latino community that has been around since the 1900s in Oceanside. And this is kind of like where we started and then moving out east. So from Oceanside to Escondido. And my dad used to go to the rez in Paula because the land, the tribe in Oceanside, the Senyo Tribe, is a landless tribe. So that's where they would go. But I'm starting to see that, you know, I don't want to split us. I thought it would be very, very easy. Numbers would come out okay, and it's going to, not going to be that. So we're hoping that it's going to be Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, and Fallbrook. And of course, Camp Pendleton, which is a very integral part of Oceanside in our history. That is what I am hoping. I'm hoping that the numbers will be there. That's why I was asking so much about the tool. Because, you know, I'm really hoping that going back and, you know, changing back the Escondido and the Rancho Santa Fe situation will put us back into this, into this. I'd love to be able to have the reservations as well, but I guess it's going to be, you know, it's going to come to the numbers, right? So thank you very much again for, you know, working with us on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon McKeeman, followed by Joy Frue.
And I'm going to beg your indulgence. I have to take care of something for just a moment. I promise I will look at your testimony and anyone else I miss. I will also leave you in the capable hands of now acting Chair Garcia, but be back just as quick as I can.
So my name is Sharon McKeeman, and I just want to thank you all for what you're doing. I, I love that you understand that this isn't just about numbers, that this is about all of the individuals that live in these communities. Commissioner Chin, I loved what you shared about the diversity of District Five. That's why you have this room full of people here because it is such a diverse and unique community. And we are all important parts of our community. So we're moms and educators and business owners, and we haven't been able to be at every meeting. But when you have been hearing people call in asking you to keep North County, North County, they're speaking for many more than are able to make it to these meetings. So first of all, North County has an identity. I know I have lived in multiple cities, and I have been here for over a decade. I consider myself a North County resident before I even consider myself a resident of a specific city. And I know many feel that way. It's actually interesting because a lot of us feel that Fallbrook is part of North County. Some of the things she mentioned as far as we should kind of fix that, we already identify some of these communities that actually aren't District Five that have the, the farming aspect and all of that as part of North County. And we don't identify nearly as much with the communities that are farther south. I have friends in Rancho Santa Fe and all that. I don't identify with that being North County. So first of all that. And then, secondly, we are extremely diverse. And so I feel like it's really important to bring, keep that diversity together. And, and if there were any changes that made us less diverse, that would really be unfortunate. Also, we have so much in common. This is absolutely a community of interest because we have so much in our identity, but also in what actually overlaps. I have had kids that have gone to a charter school that was all over North County in multiple cities. We have overlapping water districts and overlapping law enforcement and, and school districts. And so in the country right now, and even on our Board of Supervisors, a lot of us feel that we're not being heard. And there's a lot of division in the country. But I will tell you that in North County, there is a lot of unity. I know a lot of people in this room, and we have been, it's such a difficult time. The reason that you see people really putting in comment is we're realizing how important government is, and we're realizing how important things like, I never thought I would be at a redistricting meeting, right? Map drawing and all that. So this is a season where we are stepping in and we are learning. And you all are going to get to know us because we're going to be back for the, the drafting sessions. And, and we appreciate that you're allowing so much opportunity for the public comment. And, and we'll be back, we'll be looking at those drafts, and we'll be back to share how we feel. And again, we just are asking you to keep North County, North County, and possibly make North County even more North County than it is right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joy Frue, followed by Tom Frue.
Hello, I'm Joy Frue, and I'm from Fallbrook, live in Fallbrook. We bought our house in Fallbrook eight years ago, moved back to Southern California from Washington State. And what I have learned about our Greater Fallbrook community as one large community of interest is that it's not just our downtown area of Fallbrook, but we have Duluth, Rainbow, and Bonzo, which are also part of the Greater Fallbrook community because we have our central town, our central downtown in Fallbrook, where the large shopping centers are the two large grocery stores and three Spanish-speaking grocery stores. And Fallbrook is 40% Hispanic. So we are part of that diverse community in North County. And I agreed with the gentleman who was talking about the importance of the agricultural basis in the county in, in, in our area, our Greater Fallbrook community, which is contiguous with the farming community of Oceanside and Vista. The other thing I wanted to mention is I'm a retired federal employee, and I belong to a group called Active and Retired Federal, Retired Employees Association, NARF. And we meet at the Senior Center in Oceanside because Oceanside is the larger hub that draws our North County community because we don't have all the commercial and social activities and the beach that they have in Oceanside. So that's where we go for our medical needs. Fallbrook doesn't, no longer has a hospital. But when I needed to go to the emergency room, I went to Tri-Cities Hospital in Oceanside. This morning, my husband went to a doctor in, in Oceanside. My doctor is in Oceanside. And the military community is, is very important in both Fallbrook and Oceanside. Both of us have a milit, a gate to Camp Pendleton. Ours is on Ammunition Road, and Oceanside is on Douglas Road. We have a very large population of retired and active military people as well as federal employees who work on the base. And they need to go to the Veterans Hospital on the base and in Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Frue, followed by Liz Sato.
Hello, my name is Tom Frue. I live in Fallbrook, and thank you very much for holding the session. Give us a chance to talk. I want to speak from Fallbrook. We are in a, we are an unincorporated area. People forget that. They, we're not a city. And because we're just a small, unincorporated area, we don't have very many services. And when we, I think my wife stole my thunder a little bit. This morning, I had the routine medical appointment, and I had to go to Oceanside for it. And so I was on Highway 76, stuck in the traffic, thinking about how North County Transit District needs to fix some of these traffic problems. And I have taken the time to talk to North County Transit District before. So we want to stay in, in the same area. There's these corridors, Highway 76, Highway 78 corridor between Oceanside and Fallbrook. All right. That's what I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Liz Sato, or Soto, followed by Justin Domasilo.
Hi, thank you, Liz Sato. So I have never been here before, and I thank you for this opportunity. I came because, you know, when you hear redistricting, you think, I'm going to be disenfranchised. So I thought, I better get over here. I only moved down here a couple of years ago from Carmel by the Sea. And I wasn't familiar with people saying, oh, you're in North County. And I was like, yeah. I start to realize, wow, that's really special, North County. I'm from North County. Like, I meet people in the airplane, you know, we're landing in San Diego. You're having a conversation where you're waiting for your bags. Oh, yeah, we're part of San Diego. Oh, yeah, I'm from, oh, North County. Oh, North County. I was like, wow, that's great. I'm in, I'm from North County. Wow, I used to live in Carmel by the Sea, but now I'm in North County. I love it. I love it here. Today, I was in Oceanside working. Then I drove to San Marcos and got my cookies conomore from the factory. You haven't tried them. They're delicious. Then I picked up my daughter at her school in St., actually, not my daughter, it's friends I'm babysitting. I shouldn't be out, but no. Anyway, I mean, I'm all over the county. Anyway, I mean, I'm all over the county, and I love it. I have a little job that I do, and I go everywhere. I go up to Fallbrook, I go up to, down to Escondido, Rancho Bernardo. Maybe that's not North County. I'm not familiar with exactly all of North County, but that is my coi, this area. And, you know, I love to go hiking up in Oceanside, go to the restaurants, go out to the beach. So I just urge you to, you know, I thank you for keeping us in mind. I will definitely be paying attention and telling my friends to pay attention, because, like I said, North County, there is something all of San Diego people know, that North County is special. I had another question. I just made some quick notes. In the one slide about why redistricting matters, I wondered, I don't think schools were listed, and I just wonder if that, I don't know if you can answer questions, but anyway, I'm not sure if that goes on your slide or not, but that was one of my questions. So I agree, please keep Carlsbad, Escondido, San Marcos, Vista together. It's a great place to live, and I really love the sun, and I don't miss the fog of Carmel. So I'm happy to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Justin Domasilo, followed by Bridget Dulcous.
Hi. I came here today personally because I love North County. I grew up here. I got to go to high school and college here and experience all of the resources and lack thereof that we've had for the last 12 years or so. I'm really trying to urge this board to keep North County together and include Escondido. Because we have unequitable distributions of our county. That's, for example, District Three, Escondido is in the Board of Supervisors District Three. That doesn't really make a lot of sense for somebody like me, who is from Escondido, because you see District Three, or District Two, or even District One have more equitable access to resources. For example, a lot of the Board of Supervisors people kind of seem like they're from like San Diego. As somebody in North County, I've never really felt like I was part of San Diego, because I grew up really low income, so I couldn't afford to take the train or the bus all the time to San Diego or work there. In fact, I had to lose employment, because I couldn't get to San Diego when I just got out of college. The other issue that I have to bring apart is when we talk about resource distribution and populations, we have to think about what this is going to look like in 10 years. If I didn't live with my parents, I would not be able to live in Vista, which is my hometown. I love Vista. I can't even live in Escondido, because I don't know if any of you have looked up the actual, like, average rent for single-person apartments right now. The average rent right now in Escondido, Eagles Point, the complex I used to live in, is $1,800. I work three jobs, I work 70 hours a week, and I have a ridiculous deductible for my healthcare. As a 25-year-old, I can't afford to live independently here. And many people in my situation have the exact same problem. And it's going to get worse as prices go up for houses. For example, we marketed in Oceanside next to Mission Vista, a housing community of affordable housing in that area, but the average price was $500,000. What 25-year-old, or what 35-year-old do you know can afford to make $100,000 down payment on a house like that? Because I don't know anyone who can. So we really have to think about how communities of interest, like young people like myself, 18 to 35, are going to afford to live here in 10 years. And how we draw the maps is going to influence the type of people and type of communities that can still afford to live here 10 years from now. How many people from disadvantaged groups like myself, I'm a member of the LGBT community, how many of us can afford to live in North County 10 years from now or 20 years from now? So I hope that's something that you consider as you watch more and more young people sort of get pushed out in the neighborhoods they grew up in, because they can't afford to live there, or their parents retire, or some sort of economic circumstance really forces them out. Rents are going up higher, and mortgages are becoming more inequitable. So please consider that when you draw your maps. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget Dulcous, followed by Lou Uradel.
Hi, I'm Bridget Dulcous. I'm a resident of North County for 47 years. And I just wanted to start with a little bit of the history and tradition that I've experienced, just as context. And I think that tradition and history are an important part of who we are as North County. When I was four, we moved to Carlsbad, and they had just put the first stoplight in on Jeffers, on Elm Street, which now Carlsbad Village Drive. And my parent, one of the selling points that the real estate agent told my parents for their house downtown was, someday Jefferson will go through, and there will be a mall that serves all of North County someday. So I don't think that was really a selling point for my parents, but that's what he said. And there, what, there it is today. So that was definitely a North, like, one of my first North County as a whole experiences. When I was 10, I was in the San Diego Youth Symphony that practiced down in Balboa Park. And there was a group of us that were in a music program in Carlsbad, a very strong music program. And we, all over North County, we would band together and carpool down, all the way down to Balboa Park. And we were our own group within that orchestra. We were our own breed, for sure, no question. And we represented North County in China in 1981 on a trip as ambassadors, cultural ambassadors. And we specifically were representing North County. And we were, I remember as a kid, we were in the newspaper as a group. It was really cool. When I was in college at USC, I had a boyfriend for a little while. And I'll never forget, like, shortly after we met and started having interest in each other, it turns out he was from San Diego, and I was so excited to meet somebody in Los Angeles from San Diego. And he was, his first reaction was, oh, how did I get so unlucky to meet someone in BFE? And I won't go into what that means, it was a new term to me, but he couldn't, he whined every time we were home for the summer, and he had to come, drive past that invisible line into North County. He was from Point Loma. So then let's take it to, when I came home from college as a professional musician, and I played in the San Diego Symphony, not the Youth Symphony, for about eight years. And I chose specifically to live in Carlsbad, not to move down close to work, down to the city, down to that different part of the world. I wanted to, I didn't mind making the drive at that time, because it was important for me to live where I identified as, as having grown up and having, being part of this tradition and this separate breed. Finally, that brings me to today, still living in Carlsbad, raising my own family there. And I just, I think, no matter what, we travel around, we use all the resources from North County. We relate, we relate as a breed to North County. We use educational resources and all kinds of sharing resources. And I think it is absolutely vital to equity that we continue to celebrate all of our differences and stay together unified.
Thank you. Lou Uradel, followed by Brittany Trimmer.
There we go. My name is Lou Uradel, and I'm a business owner in Oceanside. I own the Metro Flex Gym there. And one of the best things I heard tonight that you guys said was, this is not a political process. Thank God. I just want to touch, I heard some people talking up here. And North County does have a distinct culture. I always think about it, my friends and I, everyone that I know throughout North County, we kind of relate to that TV show, The Game of Thrones, that was out. And this is like, this is like the North. And there's a certain pride in the North. We, everyone's like, oh, from the North, North County, this is North County, this is us. And we have a distinct personality. We're hardworking, and it's just something that we carry a big pride with. I don't care where you are, who you are, what your race is. I relate to all kinds of people. I know some people that barely speak English, and I'm like, yeah, North County, let's go, you know? So North County is a community that flows together in many aspects. We have a special North County culture that has very unique diversity in population. Many of our local government groups work together along the 78 and 76 corridors. It's called a community of interest for that reason. As many of you live here have the same goals, desires, and respective communities. And we work together on homeless issues, crime, traffic, road conditions, all throughout, all throughout our county. And it's cool to be able to talk to one supervisor on that. If we split it up and we have to deal with two supervisors for two different areas on the same issues, it just creates a lot of gridlock. And another reason why I'm glad this isn't a political process. As a business owner, I service clients that range throughout the county. And I like being able to go to one supervisor and talk about those issues. And I don't want to be able to talk about this with two supervisors, because it's one community and one culture that's all together. Moreover, one of the biggest reasons that I believe to redistrict is to resolve an injustice to a particular group of people made a minority due to unethical or specific redistricting. There's no such group being split up in North County. In fact, the entirety of North County has a certain look and feel that adds its own individual identity, has been built over, established throughout the years. The injustice would be to split up that cohesive community with similar values, the very reason the district should not be changed. The greatest harm would be split this community up. The greatest harm would be do this for no distinct reason, then be dismantle this community. I ask today that you guys keep North County, North County, and keep the North the North. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Trimmer, followed by Nicole Rick.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing my kids to be kind of loud in here. I am a mother, and I have lived in North County my entire 33 years on this beautiful earth. I have grown up in Encinitas. I was born in Tri-City. And we started, but we moved out in San Marcos, me and my husband. And then we started our family in Carlsbad. And we just bought a house in Fallbrook. So I'm actually excited that there's other Fallbrook members here. I love North County. I love the feel and the laid-back calmness. I go down to San Diego, and I feel so frazzled all the time. Every time I go down to, and then I come back up here, I'm like, ah. I even go to Disneyland a lot. And I get asked all the time, oh, where are you from? Oh, North County. And they, they love it. Oh, that's amazing. And I, I love living here. And I don't think that it's going to be good for our community that we've already had all this time to really come together as a community, and now you're going to go and separate us. And I don't really feel it's going to benefit our kids and the next generations. So we really need to think about them and what this might do to them in adding different areas. So that's all. I'm going to get my kids home. Thank you so much. Guys, have a great day.
Thank you. Nicole Rick, followed by Amber Long.
Hi, my name is Nicole Reich, and I have been a public school teacher in North County for the last 10 years. I have lived in Vista and Oceanside my entire life. And North County is a unique and distinguished community in San Diego County. It's like, it's unlike anywhere else in California. Being born and raised here, I know that despite its vast geographical area, that North County has always had a small-town feel. From its local businesses to the endless places to visit, North County has an identity all its own. North County has always been tightly connected through its highways, school districts, and services. Growing up here, it has always felt like one large town. If the boundaries were to be redrawn and changed to break up this area as a district, it would fracture generations of community that have been built in this area. As a mom and an educator in this community, I hope to see North County remain the one district it is to preserve the diverse community that we have created. Please take into consideration the perspective of those of us who have lived here our whole lives and keep our community whole as one unified district. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Long, followed by Gloria Conejo.
Hello, my name is Amber Long. This here is my son, Alexander Scott Mejialong. We have both been in Vista all our lives. I can attest to the feeling of togetherness within this district. I consider all of those who live here as family. The Nextdoor app keeps us all unified. I have used it to connect with those in Hidden Meadows, Oceanside, Vista, and San Marcos to do fresh fruit drives for a local food pantry in Vista. I would go from house to house and collect extra fruit from neighbor, from neighbors' trees. With the neighbors, I would sometimes get upwards to 20 bags of fresh fruit a week. This is just one of the examples of the togetherness in this district. I definitely see us all as one district and believe we should remain as one. I can't imagine my son growing up and missing out on all the togetherness that I have been able to enjoy throughout my childhood. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Gloria Conejo, followed by Ross Pike.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Gloria Conejo. I'm a youth community organizer in North Inland San Diego County. I was born and raised in Byacumucham, Luiseno Land, otherwise known as Escondido, Palomar Hospital, Escondido, which will now be gentrified into Palomar Heights Development. I am a fourth-generation Mexican-American. After I was born, I was raised for about five years of my life in Palma Valley, the valley where my great-grandparents and my grandparents, each on my father's and mother's side, picked fruits from the groves and lived on the lands of their bosses. My mother's generation grew up in the valley, both Center and Palma, even in Fallbrook. They went to their public schools and churches, because these towns are that connected. Unlike my predecessors, I grew up in the less rural, slightly more urban Escondido. I've been housing insecure since I was 12 years old. Escondido is where I became the first person in my family to get a high school degree. It's where I became the first person in my family to go to college. And Escondido was where I became the first person to really become civically engaged. And my parents did this because we would have more access to resources and opportunity in Escondido. Transportation is one of the key issues that could mean life or death for someone living in the rural valley. As an area above the 76, 78 corridor, and still struggling areas of Escondido with less privileges than I, there was and still is not many places for youth to go. I learned my cousins in Vista, all the way to Oceanside, all share similar roots and experiences. So whether it be in District Five or wherever we're placed, no matter where we are, our gente, our mixed peoples, have nothing but the hope of what we can give to the children after us, my nieces and nephews. Our Latinx communities have migrated up and down the southern part of the continent since before there was even a United States. I have more in common with the people above the 76 and 78 corridor than below, or really like on the more coastal areas. In regards to issues such as housing, transportation, access to healthcare, et cetera. So I feel like I have like a lot more in common, like, when it comes to those kind of issues. So please take my words into consideration and do not separate my community of interest, which is a Latinx community. We will be affected by the lines that will get drawn, and will have impacts on our communities for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ross Pike, followed by Kathleen Boyle.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ross Pike, and I'm an elected member of the Fallbrook Planning Group, but I speak to you this evening as an individual North County resident. My community of interest is North County. When I say North County, I'm referring to the communities along the 76 and 78 corridors. Communities like Fallbrook, Bonzel, Vista, Valley Center, San Marcos, Oceanside, and Escondido are essential parts of North County. Our communities share so many similarities and resources from overlapping agencies like health districts, fire districts, law enforcement, border districts, school districts, and especially transportation services. We deserve to have a single advocate for our communities that understands all of those connections between those specific communities. As a resident of the unincorporated area of Fallbrook, I share more in common with the surrounding communities like Bonzel, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, Valley Center, Oceanside, and the rest of the communities along the 76 and 78 corridors than the rest of the county. For example, if I want to leave Fallbrook on a bus, I am taken to the Transit Center in Vista. Our communities are not comparable to places like the city of San Diego, East County, or South County. We are coastal, rural, and urban, with shared common goals that unite us. Today, I ask that you respect our community of interest by keeping our communities together, allowing for a unified North County represented by a single county supervisor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Sean Frederickson.
Hi, good evening. There are many reasons for wanting to include and therefore exclude different cities and communities from a particular district. I will speak right now in terms of, of those many reasons, I will speak in terms of cities versus unincorporated areas. The five cities along the 78 corridor make up an obvious cluster of areas with similar interests and challenges. Escondido has been excluded right now from, from this district, although it seems like it should be very much a part of this district. Escondido is part of many North County groups, civic organizations, community organizations that run across the whole 78 corridor, and yet it's excluded from the district. I know that to reduce carbon emissions, which we're talking about a lot these days, many have advocated for greater availability and use of public transportation. People who live in cities are more apt to be able to take public transportation. They might live near a Sprinter hub or a coaster hub. I think there should be greater availability, maybe even free transit, and that they should be extremely reliable. You could lose a job if you're late to work, for many people, and more frequent. So I think we should make it more and not less. People are saying, well, there's nobody on the Sprinter, we should do away with them. Not at all. This is something we need to do, and we need to do it now. And we need some north-south route along the parallel to the 15, something public transport, rail, whatever, along the 15. rail, whatever, along the fifteen. So in my opinion, the city of Escondido should very much be part of District Five. Looking at the unincorporated areas, and they have different issues. And one of the issues I'm thinking of, we always think of agriculture and rural, but another thing is that people are always trying to plant huge developments in areas that are very fire-prone and that don't have safe routes out of the area in case they need to evacuate. And we've seen evacuations happen so much in the last ten or so years. And I remember there was one along the seventy-six where people weren't getting anywhere and they were trying to just get out of, was it Bonzel or Fallbrook, that one? So when I read about a development in one of these areas, I think about it, well, that's so bad, but I don't take it personally because I live in Vista. But the people who live in the unincorporated areas would have great fears for this. So I think if they could be more together in a same district, they can advocate for themselves even more. And against my own logic, I very much see Fallbrook as part of District Five. It's kind of, we do a lot back and forth. I've gone to meetings in Fallbrook for different organizations. So I would block off the eastern part, the Valley Center part, and leave Fallbrook in District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Frederickson followed by John Franklin.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I just want to start with the, the approach that you're taking. Oh, my name's Sean Frederickson, by the way. Thank you for ensuring that this is not a political redrawing. As residents of North County, these past two months have come with continuous frustration as we residents of North County have been ignored by leaders in San Diego. And so to know that this isn't political gives us much relief. The beauty of, of North County is that we as residents are capable of staying within North County and really fulfilling our entire lives. I live within, within Vista. And so when my family wants to, to go to the beach, we're able to go straight down the seventy-eight, hit, hit Carlsbad. Or if, if we're looking for different options for education, Carlsbad. Or if we're looking for a local church, San Marcos. And I think one of the beautiful things about North County is, like many of these people have mentioned, is that we really are our own community, that we really help each other out. Like there are leaders in here from Carlsbad, there's leaders from San Marcos, there's leaders from Vista, there's leaders from even Escondido that we, we feel like is really North County as well. Like this previous woman had mentioned that it looks as though that Reamer's District has gained eleven thousand residents in this past census. And so what I was thinking, I mean, I'm not you guys, but I was looking at the numbers and it seems as though Reamer's, or the District Three, which is Reamer's District, has gained eleven thousand. District One has lost eighteen thousand. District Four has lost three thousand. And those are just estimates. I mean, obviously, there's more numbers than that. But so what if we ended up taking some of District Three, which has gained eleven thousand, and then we were able to expand San Diego County, or San Diego, which is Fletcher's, who's lost that three thousand, therefore they're able to receive that three thousand increase there, right? Because from what I understand, you guys are looking at numbers. Is that, is that correct? That's really, it's really about numbers. Okay, so you're able to get those three thousand from, from District Three, therefore North County still remains the same. And then you've also got eighteen thousand from District One, which is at a loss. And you're definitely not going to get those from, from District Two, but you could get three of those from District Two. So maybe you, you're able to pull into some of District Two. I'm not sure how they feel about that, but it keeps North County the same, which is lovely. And I think that's what we're all kind of coming at this, at this perspective of how do we ensure our home stays our home and that we don't have politics that we disagree with taking our home away? Thank you.
Thank you. John Franklin followed by Hayden Hamilton.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I just want to say to all of you, thank you very much for investing your time to serve the community. I know what a commitment that is. I'm a member of the council here in Vista and I want to reiterate what you've heard from a lot of my neighbors, which is that, you know, we participate in a lot of cooperative government agencies with our neighboring cities from Carlsbad to Escondido. And so certainly, we are a very unique community of interest along the seventy-eight corridor, but not just from the coast, all the way to the edge of the county. I want to talk to you about my experience as a member of the Vista Irrigation District Board of Directors. In the past, before I was on the council, I learned all about the history of Vista. In the nineteen twenties, Vista acquired forty-three thousand acres. That's on the northeast corner of San Diego County. It's been called Warner Ranch. And that sixty-six square miles supplies the watershed. This serves between one-third and one-half of the fresh water that is supplied here in Vista. And that is a resource that belongs to the people of Vista and it also serves small portions of Oceanside, Escondido, and San Marcos. So we feel it's very important that Warner Ranch property continue to be part of our supervisory district. We do absolutely shop and share a community with Valley Center, all the way out to Brago and Julian. Those corridors, the seventy-six corridor, the seventy-eight corridor, they are the primary ones that connect our community here. And so what I'm asking is that you would consider maintaining as much of the integrity of the current fifth district as possible and continuing to keep District Five going all, you know, north of the seventy-eight, all the way to the edge of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hayden Hamilton followed by Letitia Maldonado-Stamos.
Thank you for opportunity to address the Commission. My name's Hayden Hamilton. I've been a resident of San, North San Diego County. Qualify that for thirty-five years, fourteen in Carlsbad and the last twenty-one in Bonzel. I'm also on the Board of Supervisors, Board of Directors for the Rainbow Municipal Water District. I'm also the serving president. I don't know that I can really articulate better than what you've already heard on what North County is about. I'm here to advocate for a unified North County. The seventy-six and seventy-eight corridors are very important to us, particularly for the urban area, the rural areas. You have, you know, Rain, the unincorporated Rainbow, Palma Valley, Fallbrook. These unincorporated areas are the agricultural bed of most of what we get in San Diego in terms of production. And they have a unified connection. We've learned how is both the incorporated and unincorporated areas to work together to function as a functional community. And continuing that is very important. And that means that our representation on the Board of Supervisors needs to come from a single source. It needs to be one that we can go to and know that we have the vested interests from that supervisor to represent this district. One of the things I thought about was the fact that most of us here in North County don't often go down to San Diego, to the city, you know, we, we live and work locally. We act locally. It's not to say we don't go, but for example, with my own personal situation, I use the airport probably one in three flights because I have Riverside and Orange County as options to fly out of. So I pick the best flights, not that I feel compelled to go to San Diego Airport. I won't go in. I have a, had a speech. I'll submit it. But the functionally, what everybody else has said, I fully support. And it's very important that we maintain a unified North County district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Letitia Maldonado-Stamos followed by Rich Trucinski.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Letitia Maldonado-Stamos, a twenty-five-year resident of Fallbrook, California. And I'm here to speak as part of the Latino community in Fallbrook. A gentleman at the hearing in Carlsbad last week mentioned that he felt that North County had been pretty much ignored. Well, take that feeling of being ignored and double it and you get the, the idea of how Fallbrook feels about being ignored. Take that feeling and quadruple it and you get an idea of how much the Latinos in Fallbrook feel that they are being ignored. From something as dire as getting access to the COVID-19 vaccine to something as seemingly innocuous as naming of a new county park. When I look at what I consider my communities of interest in town, it gets confusing for me. I used to work five days a week in San Diego, so transportation and freeway congestion was very important. The Fruze talked about a hospital. We don't have that anymore. Shopping and other services, again, for the most part, are outside of Fallbrook businesses. Those businesses for me tend to be mostly Escondido, Vista, San Marcos, and of course, Temecula. But that's not in our county, and Oceanside. But my main point for presenting today is to give examples of how Latino voice can be ignored by the very people who are supposed to be representing us when that voice is diluted. The two examples that I will use are the ones that I mentioned earlier, vaccinations and county parks. It seems as if Fallbrook was the last community to have local vaccine clinics made available. With approximately fifty percent Latino population, we had to constantly be pestering to get clinics up there after being told to go to the website, wait online for an hour or more, only to be advised to drive for hours for the vaccine. My own supervisor, county supervisor, responded to my desperate email in January with advice to do exactly what I had been doing every day, all day, for two weeks. The other example is our newest park. Local Latino community members were involved in design and suggesting a name for that park. We suggested a name that not only gave reference to the actual location of the park, Moro Road, but also gave some recognition to the native and Latino population in Fallbrook. We understand that that name being given by the county is Village View for a site that gives no view of the village of Fallbrook. That is not representation. Fallbrook has had a Latino history that has been very volatile over the decades. We've dealt with neo-Nazi presence, a conservative leaning and that seeks to keep the Latino influence at bay. And now we're working diligently to empower our Latino residents. Our voice is strengthened by our association with San Marcos, Escondido, Vista, and Oceanside. We ask that you please consider the Latino community when you're making your lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rich Trucinski followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Hello, guys. My name is Rich Trucinski and I'm a resident here in Vista, California. So I thank you guys for your service and your volunteer positions here. I understand that that's a lot of time and I appreciate that. I work, I used to be a professional motorcycle racer and mechanic. And a lot of times, now I'm in the financial industry and I'm going out and a lot of times I feel like I'm a volunteer. So I understand what you guys are feeling. I also volunteer at our church and all of those positions are very important. And I don't want to make that, I want to make sure that people know that that's important. So they sometimes call me the master of the obvious. So I, I like to talk about stuff that's obvious, but a lot of times it doesn't get talked about too much. And I think that everybody, I agree with everybody, I'm against splitting up North County. North County is definitely a diverse community. It's got motorcycle racing, it's got skateboarding, it's got churches, it's got all the stuff people want, right? And so the other thing too is, is we've got government trust. The community, the, you know, society, especially in America, is, doesn't trust the government as much as they used to, right? It's probably at an all-time low. So I know you guys are technically not political motivated, whatever, but here's the deal. Let's keep it that way. Let's not bring the politics into it. Let's not make people not trust you guys, okay? That's the main thing. We've got to make sure that less is better. Less is more, they always say, right? The less people in this, this governing or supervising or being representative, you know, representing this area, the better, okay? So far, we got the best guy going on the county board and we want to keep him. So this is the best way to keep him. And that's the way I'm, that's all I got.
Thank you. Stephanie Jackel followed by Sarah Green.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Jackel and I'm a resident of Vista of North County. I'm here to say as strongly as I can that we, Vista, need Carlsbad to remain a part of District Five. District Five should consist of these more urban areas, which are part of the seventy-eight economic corridor as well as the seventy-six. These areas have worked very well together on shared interests and issues, not the least of which is the McClellan-Palomar Airport. A District Five without Carlsbad will disenfranchise these other cities, including Vista, from the shared voice for these issues. We in Vista need Carlsbad in District Five. As you say, we in District Five are a community of interest. You've heard the saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Please leave District Five intact.
Thank you. Sarah Green followed by Rebecca Medici.
Hi, I'm Sarah Green. I moved here about six years ago to Valley Center, unincorporated. I chose it because it's unincorporated. Also that it does not have, I loved that it didn't have a stoplight at the, at the exit. And so I could move to Southern California for the great weather and feel like I'm in this beautiful area with olive trees and these unincorporated area that is rural. I understand that we have, Escondido is really close. It's a real simple city. I like the type of people. I've never been honked at in Escondido. I mean, that's kind of nice people, you know, real simple, easygoing. And this is what I like about North County. And then I found out it has a culture that's really neat. And I feel like this, the culture of the simplicity, and I understand that San Marcos is a little more, you know, jazzy and Carlsbad is a beautiful, you know, that's a lovely city too. But it, the culture of North County is sort of not in the, the runaround and the fancy, I guess, or whatever, too much stuff. I, I've, the other guy said less is more. And I feel like I've met the people in my area that have grown up in Paula and, and that, those areas and they have this beautiful culture, slower type of lifestyle and more family-oriented. And I feel like the North County should stay as one, have one representative the way that it already is. I didn't realize it didn't include Fallbrook. I think, I'm not sure what was, is going on there, but Fallbrook is more connected like to Valley Center, but it should have one voice to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Medici followed by Tazin Nizam.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Medici. Thanks for having me here. I've lived in North County for twenty-five years. I moved from South County. And I agree with everyone, it's better here. And I especially want to advocate for keeping Carlsbad in our, in our district because of the Palomar Airport, that's, they're going to be expanding and keeping also because of Tri-City Hospital, which is, I mean, the Tri-Cities are Carlsbad, Vista, and Oceanside. And I just think that these places need to stay together. So I think that's just important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tazin Nizam followed by Shabana Katri.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, thank you so much. I just saw you guys on Saturday and I'll see you again on Saturday. So I'm getting so excited about geography and redistricting. I never thought I would say that. So thank you for your service and continuously showing up for the people of San Diego all across the county. Thank you. I just want to take a moment and thank my community for showing up. It's, it's really nice to see the different diversity of North County. And as everyone has said, North County has its own unique characters. When we were organizing the Women's March, there was a march in San Diego and my friend Sue and I, we were the first persons to say, nope, North County is unique. We have our own sets of issues and we will have our own march. And long before, ten thousand people showed up because ten thousand people believed what Sue and I believe. So just amazing. My, my name is Tazin Nizam. I am the Director of the CARE San Diego Chapter. I live in Vista. I've lived in Vista for seventeen years. I moved from Rancho Bernardo. And I love Vista. I love North County. As everyone said, it has its own unique feel. And we're here for a reason. We love North County and we want to keep it the way it is, as a lot of people have been saying. That being said, like I said, I lived in Vista for seventeen years and the airport- and the airport has been a growing part of that community. And we, as South Vista residents, have felt the impact of it. So it's very important for us to have Carlsbad be part of this district so that when we talk about the airport and its abatements and the things that go into it, we get a voice at the table. And that's why I'm here with my friends from Citizens for a Friendly Airport, South Vista Communities, and the rest of Vista to advocate for Carlsbad to be part of this district. Like most of us, I am part of the Muslim community. North County has a growing diverse Muslim community, and that's a community of interest that not gets represented a lot of times. There's not, there's like three of us here, and a few of us will be calling in. So you won't get to hear that many of our voices. So it's important for the Muslim community in San Diego, North County, San Diego, to stay together because we have a mosque in Vista. We have one. We have lots of people coming from all over North County to attend the mosque, from San Marcos, from Oceanside, from Carlsbad. So please keep us together, don't draw a line and divide our communities. Thank you once again. Good night.
Thank you, Shabana Katri, followed by Jamila Granza.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Shabana Khan. Thank you so much for having me on this forum. Nice to see familiar faces from the Carlsbad hearing. So I live and I work in Carlsbad. I've been in Carlsbad for about over twenty years now. And so being part of the Carlsbad community, I've been attending the mosque in Vista also for over twenty years. And we have friends from all over along the corridor of seventy-eight. So my kids and I, so I belong to the North County Muslim community, and that is my community of interest. And that community is in Vista, in Carlsbad, and all along the seventy-eight. So I'm here today to advocate that Vista continues to be part of District Five. And I'm also here to respectfully advocate that my community of interest not be divided. So it's just as everyone has been saying here, just to keep it together. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jamila Granza, followed by Dan O'Donnell.
Good evening. My name is Jamila Granza. I couldn't agree more with what already been said. If it's not broke, then why fix it? So again, my name is Jamila Granza. I live in Oceanside for almost twenty-five years now. And currently, I work as a relief, as a relief organization. I manage food pantries and also domestic violence shelters here. So I here also emphasizing what Tazin's already said, that our communities, Muslims' communities, we are growing up here in North County, and we call our neighbors in Vista, and our call neighbors in San Marcos and Escondido, Oceanside. Those are North County for us. So I'm here again to emphasize the importance of keeping Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, Oceanside united in one district, as well as including our Muslims, our immigrants, and refugee community of interest in North County together in a single supervisory district. As an immigrant community, the majority of us speaks a primary language other than English at home, and are limited English proficiencies. I see myself in community with Carlsbad, San Marcos, Vista, Escondido, and Oceanside as well. These cities must be united in a single district to ensure that our shared needs as immigrants and refugees, such as affordable housing and equitable transportation access and English language services, and adequately address by the supervisors of the county of San Diego. Thank you so much, Kuvani.
Thank you, Dan O'Donnell, followed by Sarah Spinks.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to thank you all for your service. I do not envy any of you for this entire decision-making process. But I just want to share my thoughts. I'm a resident of Vista. I live maybe five minutes up the road from here. But, you know, I grew up in a small suburb outside the city of Chicago. I've lived in California for over a decade now. And it wasn't until I moved to North County, moved to Vista, that I actually started calling California home because it is a unique experience living here in North County. And I've said it before, but the seventy-eight is not just another highway. It is a bridge between our cities that connects Oceanside and Carlsbad, San Marcos, Vista, Escondido. We are a community of shared resources. It connects our school districts, our shopping malls, our employment, our colleges, and our businesses. Beyond that, we all fall underneath the umbrella of the Innovate Seventy-Eight, which supports our business infrastructure, economic ecosystem. We're a melting pot of shared resources, including microbreweries and restaurants, information and medical technology, as well as healthcare and green energy. Most importantly, though, our communities lean on one another. I know it's been said tonight, but the direct impacts of what takes place at Palomar Airport will affect every one of the communities that currently reside in District Five. So I would like to see Oceanside and Carlsbad, San Marcos, Vista, and all of Escondido incorporated into this district. And again, my name is Dan O'Donnell, and thank you for the time to speak this evening.
Thank you, Sarah Spinks, followed by Arcela Nunez Alvarez.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Sarah Spinks. I grew up here in Vista. I would want to advocate to include Escondido and Carlsbad and the other cities along the seventy-eight corridor. I feel like we have an opportunity to transform how we move around in our district using public transport. I just read an article about e-bikes. You know, they're about to change how people move around cities and getting around. And we have a real issue with, you know, like, I just read an article about the hole in the ozone over in Antarctica, like, the size of Antarctica now. So we really need to do something about this stuff. I think having a cohesive vision for North County is necessary. I'd also like to add that having all these cities together makes sense for me. Maybe some environmental preservation, like, for more sprawl development. Like, can we get serious about this smart growth? Can we? Trash Edco is in Escondido, serving all these cities all over the seventy-eight corridor. Hospitals got all these cities contracting with the sheriffs. So we have law enforcement issues. And then all the chambers, I'm on the chamber here in the City of Vista as Board of Directors, and all the chambers are all talking to each other. And like Dan mentioned, Innovate Seventy-Eight, so we have an economic ecosystem here. And yeah, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Arcela Nunez Alvarez.
Buenas tardes. Good evening. My name is Arcela Nunez Alvarez, and I am one of the co-directors of Universidad Popular, the People's University. We are dedicated to promoting education and civic engagement across the whole North County region. This evening, I echo, and I want to share the pro-North County sentiment that you've been hearing about all evening. We do enjoy quite a perfect blend of rural and urban environments. In addition to what everyone else has been saying, I would like to add the perspective of my community as a Mexican, as a Latina, as an immigrant. I am asking the Commission, on behalf of many of the families that I work with, to consider the historic impact of the Latino, Latinx community in the whole North County region. We are concentrated along the seventy-eight and seventy-six corridors. Our community has deep roots in this region. I don't have to give you a history lesson, but I'm sure you already know and remember from fourth grade class that this was Mexico, that the city's names, Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, are a testament to that history and the presence of our communities here. However, our communities have been historically disenfranchised. We've been marginalized. As my good friend Letitia mentioned earlier, we continue to see that disadvantage in our communities, in the neighborhoods, in the barrios, that used to be the old ranchos. That is the origin of our cities. We are looking at reuniting all of our communities and ask you to bring the city of Escondido back into North County to join our community. We appreciate the work that you are doing and hope that you will give voice to the Latino community that has been historically disenfranchised. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes those requests in person who have submitted requests to speak in advance. On that, I'll turn to those participating remotely who have submitted requests to speak in advance. And I'm going to ask those individuals to please raise a virtual handle. It'll make it much easier for me to find you. Those individuals are Tim Macedo, Diana Aguirre, Catherine Carbone, Yasmin Obid, Michelle McCaffrey, Alina June Nowabi, and Kevin Stevenson. I'll start with Alina June. You'll have three minutes to address the Commission. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record if you're agreeable to doing so. You may need to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Alina June Nowabi. I'm representing Council on American Muslim Relations. I'm a Muslim, and I have really enjoyed North County's resources and services. I spend most of my weekends up there teaching, tutoring, as well as volunteering. We have about three to four mosques, very large mosques, with a very heavy population of Muslim in Amensah. Amensah is Arab Middle Eastern Muslim South Asian community up there. We speak various languages from Arabic, Farsi, Pashto, to Somali. But I would really like to urge all of you, and also thank you for holding this meeting together, to keep our communities together. You know, when I go up there, I volunteer with youth, and I give classes of empowerment, and we do a lot of community services there. So breaking us up at this point, I think it will definitely impact the youth and all the curriculum that we've been offering the youth up there. And I'm hoping if we can keep our communities together by keeping the D five supervisory district together, that would make a huge impact for the future of our youth. Not only their academic development, but also their emotional and mental developments, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle McCaffrey, you have three minutes to address the Commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. My name's Michelle McCaffrey, and I have lived in the North County since nineteen eighty-six. I've worked in, prior to that, I lived in Orange County and Santa Cruz County. And I mention that because although I've lived here for many years, I'm familiar with other parts of California and can confidently say that North County is a unique paradise in the great state of California. I've lived in Fallbrook for the last twenty years. I've worked in Carlsbad, Vista, and Escondido, currently work in Oceanside. My son's working Carlsbad. My husband works in Vista. Our doctors are in Oceanside. My niece lives in Vista and attends Cal State San Marcos. So our community of interest includes Fallbrook, Vista, Oceanside, San Marcos, and Carlsbad. Schools, recreation facilities, transit, fire protection, law enforcement, and health services are shared between all North County areas, from Rainbow to Carlsbad. It is vitally important that the San Diego County districts include one district that covers all of North County as a whole. Representative for this area must know this area, and the only way to know North County is to live in North County. I don't believe a representative from South or East County can be as knowledgeable about the needs of the North County. While I've not always agreed with the District Five supervisors politically, I have trusted that they have North County's best interests in mind because they live in North County. So as the other speakers have said, please do all that you can to keep this North County district whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is signed in as Mike. You have three minutes to address the Commission. You may need to unmute yourself.
Hi, yes, my name is Michael McDonald, and I'm a member of Asian Solidarity Collective and a resident of District Four. My community consists of the Midtown neighborhoods, including Normal Heights, North Park, University Heights, and Hillcrest. But I grew up in Rancho Penasquitos and visit family in El Cajon often. I urge you to draw district lines that respect API San Diego's communities of interest and empower our community. Many of San Diego's API residents and businesses are centered in the neighborhoods of Miramesa, Serrano Valley, Kearney Mesa, the Convoy Street Commercial Corridor, Miramar, and Rancho Penasquitos. Every community deserves a voice in county government, and it's time that the supervisor district lines reflect the rapid growth and unique priorities of San Diego's API community. Our community has never had a representative on the Board of Supervisors, and many of our neighborhoods have been split between numerous districts over the years. Much of the area is included in the current District Three, but should be more united completely under the new district lines. It's certainly not acceptable to take us backwards. Our API community of interest is compact and contiguous and can easily be kept together as a whole in numerous district alignments, either in the current District Three or new district lines. Please honor the API community of interest and maximize our ability to have our voices heard in the San Diego County government. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Carbone, you have three minutes to address the Commission.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak on this important topic. My name's Catherine Carbone. I have lived in Fallbrook since 2012. I request that Fallbrook stay in District Five. Fallbrook is a village bordering on Oceanside and Bonzel, and those unfamiliar with the area should know that it is a close community to Oceanside for the purposes of shopping and entertainment. We also have military members and families moving back and forth between Oceanside and Fallbrook because, as Joy Prue said, "There is a gateway to Camp Pendleton in each locality." The boundary between Fallbrook and Oceanside is murky at best in the South Moro Hills area, where some in that neighborhood have an Oceanside zip code and some have a Fallbrook zip code. I've lived in Oceanside as well from 2003 to 2012, and today I remain very active in both communities. I owned a retail store in Bonzel from 2012 to 2017, and I was honorary mayor of Bonzel from 2014 to 2016. I know this community, and I'm an active member of this community. For what it's worth, in my work as a community activist in local politics in both Fallbrook and Oceanside, I've found that the split between conservative and liberal here in Fallbrook is right around fifty-fifty. Fallbrook is a hundred percent more connected to Oceanside than it is to, say, to Mecula or to Escondido. Because of Fallbrook's strong bond with Oceanside, please keep us in District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Macedo, you have three minutes to address the Commission.
Good evening. My name is Tim Macedo. I am both a County of San Diego employee and a South County resident living in the city of Chula Vista. I am speaking today to request the Commission approve a South County border district that upholds the principles of the Voting Rights Act by including all of San Diego County's border communities. A district established along the border region would give voice to so many previously underrepresented South County residents. It was not until this past November that residents of the South Bay had a supervisor who truly embodies the majority of its residents. Another obstacle to proper representation has been combining the communities of Point Loma and Coronado into the same district as those in the border region, thereby diluting the voices of our lower-income residents. This action is even more egregious, knowing that it was done to ensure political survivability versus expanding community representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is signed in as Amalia. You have three minutes to address the Commission.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Amalia. I just want to ask--
Amalia, you're still there?
Oh, hello?
I'm sorry, Amalia. We'll give you your three minutes back.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I just want to echo the sentiments of the previous speakers and reiterate the need to keep our North County communities together, specifically including the low-income Latinx folks that live in Escondido, where I have personally lived since I was about three years old. As mentioned before, the pricing of housing is ridiculous. It is unfair that no matter how hard my family members, friends, and I work, it seems like we will never be able to afford a home in our own neighborhoods. Every single one of us has privileges-- Every single one of us has privileges and disadvantages. You as commissioners today are tasked with this great responsibility that the lines drawn are not continued to be gerrymandered and that they take into account the needs and the voices of people who have historically been pushed to the side and ignored, including those that aren't here today. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Our final speaker is signed in as Piggy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Piggy Christina Manankil and I am with Asian Solidarity Collective. I've been a resident of Encanto, Lemon Grove, and Paradise Hills for over 35 years. My family and I live on Flipper Drive and my children have attended school and graduated from high school in this neighborhood. Many of us are working-class families, have to work multiple jobs and live with family to afford rent. Some of us have multi-generational families to take care of and many of us continue to experience the effects of COVID during this pandemic. Our community has shared languages, cultural practices, food, and common goals for our children and families. We are immigrants, refugees, or children of immigrants and refugees. Southeast San Diego is mainly comprised of renters, English language learners, and large families, and many prioritize affordable and adequate housing, English as second language services, public transportation, education access, and fighting against policing and incarceration. I define my community in Southeast San Diego by these general boundaries: La Mesa to the north, 805 to the west, 54 to the south, 175 to the east. And some community landmarks are pillars of the community: Tubman Chavez Community Center, Malcolm X Library, Recreation Centers, Bay Terrace Park, and the MT Australia Center on Market Street. I advocate to emphasize the importance of keeping Southeast San Diego united in a district, as well as including San Diego refugee communities together in a single supervisory district. As a newcomer community, the majority of families speak a primary language other than English at home and are limited in English proficiency. Southeast San Diego has historically seen high numbers of refugee resettlement relying on strong community networks for mutual aid and support. I see myself in community with City Heights, La Mesa, La Presa, Rancho San Diego, El Cajon, Granite Hills, Bastonia, Spring Valley, and Encanto, Skyline, Paradise Hills, Lemon Grove. And we define our COI as BIPOC immigrant and refugee. Southeast San Diego must be united in a single district and share the same district with other refugee communities throughout the county to ensure that our shared needs as BIPOC refugees and immigrants are adequately addressed by the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes those participating remotely who have requested to speak in advance. I'll now turn to any remaining public comments from those present. Even if you haven't filled out a speaker slip, the commission would welcome your comments. Please come to the microphone. Not seeing any movement in the chamber, I'll turn to our, those participating remotely who did not submit an advance request to speak. If you'd like to address the commission, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time. Omer Khan, you have three minutes to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can, we can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you all so much for your time. My name is Omer. Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido united in one district, as well as including our Muslim immigrant and refugee communities of interest in North County, together in a single supervisory district. As an immigrant community, the majority of us speak a primary language other than English at home and are limited in English proficiency. I myself in community, I see myself in community with Carlsbad, San Marcos, Vista, and Escondido. These cities must be united in a single district to ensure that our shared needs as BIPOC immigrants and refugees, such as affordable housing, equitable transportation access, English as a language service, are adequately addressed by the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any further virtual hands. I would like to note for the record that we have now received 101 ecomments on this matter, and that concludes public testimony on today's hearing. Chair Beam.
Thank you very much, David, and thank you for bringing everyone to the floor so smoothly. It's much appreciated. Thank you, commissioners, for your attention, and most of all, thank you to members of the public, and I'll say this for recording purposes as well. It really is outstanding. I apologize for having to step out. I promise it was for the best of reasons. Thank you, co-vice chair Garcia, for stepping in. Much appreciated. I'm sure it ran a lot more smoothly with you in the chair. I want to particularly thank everyone who participated and took the time to come. I want to particularly thank those who are providing any kind of service to the community, from veterans to first responders, to local officials, to people who've just been involved in advocating for various communities of interest. It really is impressive and great to hear and truly helps us get our work done. Again, we have a very important responsibility, draw lines for the elections to the Board of Supervisors, and we simply cannot do that without your help. Before we head back to our remaining agenda, which is going to be a bit of a challenge, commissioners, I want to warn you, I do want to ask everyone still here to drop survey cards in the boxes on your way out, or complete an online survey, especially for those joining us virtually. We look forward to you joining us at our final pre-mapping public hearing, although there will be other public hearings later in the fall. But we do have one more pre-mapping public hearing on Saturday, September 25th, at 1:00 PM, in the Spring Valley Community Center. That's at 8735 Hamishaw Boulevard in Spring Valley. The zip code is 91977, but we'll also include virtual participation. With that, and a note to commissioners that we will resume promptly in five minutes at 7:22, I will adjourn this public hearing at 7:17 PM. Commissioners, this is a 20 to 30-second heads-up. And Commissioner Inman, I am truly impressed with your ability not to gloat and get too excited about the data. That is a voice of moderation, sir. All right. So seeing that the time has actually shifted to 7:23, let me now reconvene our IRC regular meeting with thanks to all the commissioners for being back on time. Much appreciated and being back on live. I think we're okay on the technical side, right? Good. Thank you all. All right, we have a little bit of a challenge in front of us because we again have a firm stop time in this facility of 8:00 PM. We obviously have an agenda that goes well beyond that. What I would like to propose is first, if anyone has any questions remaining for flow analytics and for the DSM presentation, please take them up directly using Commissioner Inman as much as you can, as the SPOC, and we'll tackle it that way. I promise we'll have a little more time to discuss that at our next meeting, the special meeting next Thursday on the 30th. What I would like to do is move, with due respect for all the good work that went into putting the budget together, I think we'll ask, I'm going to ask for one motion in a moment to table certain agenda items. But what I'd like to do is next turn to Agenda Item Eight to discuss and possibly approve the outreach plan. Then go to Agenda Item Nine for a discussion of where we are on the additional four meetings we were talking about in the approved timeline from September 9th. More on that in a moment. And then I think ABASD can still do an expeditious review of the metrics. I'd like to cover that today, just so commissioners have the benefit of that, and so that they have an opportunity to ask any quick follow-ups that ABASD could take up in the interviewing week. I need to say just a few words about our next agenda for next Thursday, just to make sure everyone understands where we are. But in effect, Item Eight, briefly, Item Nine, somewhat briefly, Item 10. So we're really tabling, if it's all right, is the monthly budget update, Item Seven. If that's an acceptable way forward and not seeing any objection.
So moved.
Okay. So Commissioner Brown, to move to table Agenda Item Seven to our next meeting, second mission. Good. Any discussion? Seeing none, David, could you please call the roll for a vote to table Agenda Item Seven until our next meeting?
Thank you. Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Krogliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Chair Beam?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ is absent. Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Chair Beam, that motion passes unanimously with all board members, commission members who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you. We will turn then expeditiously to Item Eight, Discussion and Possible Approval of the Outreach Plan for Draft Map Public Hearings. This item is for the IRC to hear how our outreach contractor, Asian Business Association San Diego, or ABASD, will continue its excellent support for public outreach and engagement to maximize broad and diverse community input at the IRC's two draft map public hearings later this fall. I want to offer my apologies for the delay in sending and posting the outreach plan. I know we tried to get those out with the agenda. In this case, it just wasn't possible. I want to assure commissioners and the public that the outreach plan will, before us, maintains the high level of public outreach and engagement we've come to expect and pursue ourselves. We'll turn to ABASD in just a moment, but first I want to turn to the IRC Outreach Single Point of Contact, co-vice chair, me, Katerina, for opening remarks. Amy.
I'm going to make it quick. This outreach plan is very similar to the outreach plan we saw for the pre-map hearings, except there are only two. We do need to decide today what times we want to post these meetings and where we might like to have them. Again, there are two, November 1st and December 2nd, and I will now turn it over to Jason to give you a quick update.
Thank you so very much, Chair and vice chair, commissioners. I will expeditiously, but as clearly as possible, go through this plan, seeing that we're time-limited to the stop time of 8:00 PM. I will be going over the draft map public hearing and outreach plan, as co-vice chair Katerina had mentioned. It is not unlike what you've seen in the past and will be very similar with some changes to, or updates to, the two dates. And we'll be going over in that public hearing plan, the purpose and objective, strategy, tactics, venue selection, proposed meeting location and time, reporting, and collateral material. Situational analysis, we recommend meeting logistics and develop outreach plan to increase public participation in the redistricting process as it relates to the two draft map public hearings. Regarding the objective, it is to provide high-quality, professional meeting logistics and support services, and to increase and encourage broad and diverse community participation and input from the five supervisory districts through the draft map public hearing phase. In this proposal, to schedule and provide logistical support for the two map public hearings, raise awareness of the redistricting process, and promote draft map public hearing participation in the five supervisory districts, and work with its outreach partners throughout the county to communicate with the public to ensure maximum public engagement. In terms of our strategy, to schedule the two meetings and continue to utilize high-quality, professional, audio and visual experience tiered resources to conduct the two draft map public hearings, and engage community-based organizations, local planning groups, special districts, chambers of commerce, and other organizations throughout the county. Going on to tactics, first of which is community relations, kind of coalition building. Leveraging longstanding relationships with community leaders, coordinate distribution of information via our CBO partners, and utilize existing candidate-sango distribution lists of the past. Regarding targeted communications, deliver communications through traditional legacy media programs, print and broadcast. Utilize audience-based IP addressable advertising solutions that span four screens, desktop, mobile, tablet, and television, and create appropriate digital content for outreach distribution across relevant social media platforms for each district among each outreach partner, and partner with. and partner with CBOs for tagging and organic sharing. Going to social media. Craft appropriate digital content for outreach distribution across relevant social media platforms for each district and outreach partners. Emphasize partnerships with CBOs for tagging and organic sharing and utilize paid ads, which will be distributed digitally to target populations. And here are some examples of those, as you've seen in the past, between our sample Twitter posts or outreach emails. You note that we made the amendment here for the signature, as noted before, from one of the commissioners with it noting outreach consultant. And going to public education, vanity URLs what we created, which you've seen, which directs to the IRC website, which is www.dryyourcommunity.com. And earned media, such as a public service announcement, which we will hopefully have the opportunity to for you, the PSA, which many of you have been seeing running, and publicize these public hearings. For venue selection rationale, as noted before, we have decided these based on reasonably accessible to retired or old individual, accessible to the working age population, adequate meeting room capacity, reasonable transit and walkability access, adequate technical capability for virtual attendance and adequate technical capability for computerized mapping activities. Regarding meeting locations and times, and this is, as co-Vice Chair Katerina had mentioned, for November 1st, we have noted here that for the two meetings, November 1st and December 2nd, that we have decided on for the location of the Community Operations Center, that is for the reason familiarity and one that provides accessibility, it's an own quantity, it's central to San Diego. And as noted by several others, having a space that is very familiar to stakeholders, communities of interest and individuals who typically participate, as many of you know, the County Operations Center or COC has acted as an interim place for the Community Administration Center for the Board of Supervisors for multiple hearings while the CAC was under construction, so there was an opportunity for those to attend there. There's also a lot of other public services available at the COC, including the Department of Environmental Health and as well as Health and Human Services, Land Use Environment Group, and also the registrar of voters. And there's ample parking and a lot of other amenities there associated with what can make it more familiar for folks to attend. You'll see here that we have for the proposed meeting time as TBD. And our rationale behind the start time is that we're recommending that early start time for accessibility and convenience of attendance to members of the public and account for, as we've seen today and in the last a few meetings, increased public comments, increased complexity of meeting content and other factors. We want to ensure that we have enough time, commission has enough time to hear the public comments as they're submitted and as more attendees meetings as outreach continues to grow, that that opportunity is available to everybody. Regarding reporting, as you've seen and will see hopefully right after this, our monthly and after-action reports are reach data and analytics and then our survey associated with that. As you've seen, we, our contract currently mandates us to provide an outreach once a month, and we also provide subsequent updates related to that as well, and do our best to respond to commissioners' questions and concerns throughout this process. Regarding collateral material. Produced collateral material, so we're the pre-mapping public hearing examples, which you can see scrolling below here. So it'll be very similar to as you see on the screen. Additional sample flyers here. And some of our social media graphic posts. Some social media posts, Twitter. Our web presence, as well, this is KPBS. And Facebook. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Jason. And just to depart from the script for a moment, I want to continue to make clear how valuable and to thank ABA SD staff, especially those in person tonight, as well as IRC staff. Because we had a wonderful combined moment. The reason I stepped away was to do a live interview on KUSI. Not something I was immediately ready to do, but gave me a chance to reinforce how much we value public input. And it only happened because ABA SD and IRC staff were on their toes and able to arrange a very smooth way for me to do that. So thank you for that. And Jason and your entire team, thank you because it's your plan that makes that kind of opportunity possible. And I'm looking forward, I hope, to other opportunities for other commissioners to do interviews, hopefully with a little more notice than three minutes, but that's not their fault. We'll see how it goes. All right. Let me turn first, before we do anything else, to David to see if there are any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item.
Thank you, Chair Bame. Not in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to do so. Please raise a virtual hand if you're participating remotely by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak, that concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bame.
Commissioners, thank you, David. For the sake of efficiency, I'll ask you to fold any clarifying questions or comments into our discussion. What I'd like to do is request a motion to approve the outreach plan for draft map public hearings as included with the agenda materials and as just presented by Jason. That is with the idea that if we can reach consensus on approving the location he provided, the COC, which I'm sure IRC staff can provide more information on as needed, and agree on a time, it would be useful to do so. However, I would notice, note that it's 7:37 and we do have a couple of things we need to do before 8:00 P. M. So with that in mind, let me ask first, is there a motion so that we can begin discussion to approve the outreach plan?
So moved.
Okay, from co-Vice Chair Katerina, second, Commissioner Hanson, thank you very much. I already have Commissioner Diaz. Any others wishing to speak? Please, Commissioner Diaz, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. The, while I appreciate the the criteria rationale for venue selection, looking at how the participation has been going so far, I feel like there's a lot of participation has been virtual. And so I'm not sure if we really need to, you know, I would have loved to see a different venue for in-person and maybe not have it at the same venue, maybe for one, it could be at a different place. So I really urge you to consider that and not, you know, I believe we commented earlier on the, on these criteria at earlier meetings and that there were some concerns of the commissioners about how these venues were selected. It might not even be that necessary right now to take those into consideration. But I really would have loved to see what kind of virtual, like in terms of getting people to attend our meetings virtually and relying on trusted messengers and the community to spread the word about our meetings is so critical. And so we saw the outcome of tonight, for example. And I'd love to, you know, hear what, how that engagement happened because I would have loved to have seen that at earlier meetings and particular in District 4. And I will just be brief, another thing is November, we still have a room for one more meeting. Why can't we have three instead of two? Again, because I want to be, I want to be thoughtful about the time. And I think this only ties into Item 10, the rest of my questions. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Yes, if you will call me.
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to back up what Commissioner Diaz just said. And secondly, I would urge we have a meeting in the coastal area. One of these meetings or the extra meeting, as she mentioned, could be anywhere between Coronado and the Delmar communities. I'd be happy to identify places in Point Loma or Pacific Beach that would be appropriate. Secondly, based on what I saw on Saturday, last Saturday in Carlsbad, I really think we ought to have some meetings on Saturday more and maybe these two.
Commissioner Larson, if you can hear me, you have frozen up on our screen. I promise we'll come back to you. Commissioner Hanson?
I represent District 4 along with Sonia and Arv, and I feel that we have heard nothing from the downtown San Diego community. So I applaud having a place that's familiar to people that are used to doing business with the county. And that location is in Kearney Mesa, at least. I agree with Arv about the coastal side. But we haven't heard anything from any downtown representative. I don't think, have we?
I think if we have heard much, it's, anything, it's been minor. All right. Again, I'll be very careful about the time. I have, want to get back to Commissioner Larson, co-Vice Chair Garcia. Co-Vice Chair Katerina, did you want to?
Wanted to say quickly that the dates for these meetings are set. Cannot change those. We cannot add another one, unfortunately, because there has to be 30 days between each meeting.
Well, yeah, let, let me just clarify. There is, there are complicating factors for the two public hearings, which ABA SD is contracted to do. And those involve the 30-day spacings that co-Vice Chair Katerina just described, that Commissioner Inman has described a number of times, and that was covered. We do, we are talking about four additional meetings that would not necessarily be public hearings, and we're not going to be able to have an in-depth discussion about that tonight. The question I'd like the commission to focus on and see if we can find consensus on is whether we can approve these two meetings as scheduled and proposed by ABA SD so that they can begin work on it. Okay, so I'll take Commissioner Larson back and then co-Vice Chair Garcia. Commissioner Larson, please.
Yeah, well, Chairman, I think you said what I wanted to say. And if you didn't hear me before, coastal area is important. We should have a meeting there. And if we can have extra meetings and have another one on Saturday, I think our communities would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yes, a couple of comments. I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Hanson's comment about maybe the perceived lack of input from District 4. And I'd like to ask ABA SD to, or I would have liked to have seen in this plan, something that talked about what they had learned from the first phase of these public hearings. What had worked, what didn't work, what they planned, you know, what worked and they were planning to exploit even further. Areas where, like District 4 perhaps, I'm not sure what the data is on that, where we haven't gotten as much public input. Obviously, we, we've heard a lot from the Chula Vista, sort of South San Diego area and from North County. So that's one comment I have, is just understanding if we're taking lessons learned and improving for this important draft map public hearing period. And in terms of the location, I'm, I'm sort of agnostic about that. I'm a little disappointed that we would have two meetings in one location, and I wonder how that, you know, how consistent that is with our statutory requirements to provide meetings and, you know, that are, you know, that provide accessibility to the public. And I actually would like to know if, what the possibility is and whether any other commissioners are, how they feel about perhaps having one of our public hearings on a Saturday. And again, to a little bit piggyback on Commissioner Larson, because we, we also had a very good turnout tonight. But Saturday was probably the first public hearing that we had with quite an impressive turnout. And again, with regards to making our meetings, you know, accessible to the public, easy for them to come to. I'm wondering about having one of our public hearings be held on a Saturday. And I, understanding that we've already approved dates, but you know what? We can, we can change those dates.
Thank you for that. I am not hearing an emerging consensus. So what I would like to do is take one more very brief round. Again, we have about 14 minutes to get through several different things, some of which will be news to commissioners, may affect their thinking on this. What I want to do immediately, though, is call on council to explain a little bit of some developments that may affect location. Then I'd like, well, then I'll take commissioners. I saw Commissioner Serbin. Did any other commissioners want to make any other quick interventions? No. Then I'll turn back to Jason with a very specific question of whether ABA SD could wait for a decision on locations till the 30th. I hesitate to do that because I know there's planning time involved, but I would rather delay a decision rather than having to make a decision today and then have to revisit it in a week or two. So Commissioner Serbin, then Marguerite, then Jason. Commissioner Diaz, is it something really urgent?
Just the scheduling, because that was TBA, the time of a meeting. So if that could be included as a, I don't know, in addition to the location, because the time is, there's not going to work for people working full-time.
Understood. Okay, very good. Thank you for that. So let me take Marguerite first, because I think that's an important point to consider. Go ahead.
I think, yeah, we're good. We're good. The, the legal news that affects some of this is that the, an urgency bill passed the legislature just this month, a few days ago. It's right now called the AB 361. It was passed with a companion bill. But the companion bill isn't urgency and it doesn't go into effect until next year. So it really doesn't affect you. What AB 861 makes possible is for virtual meetings to continue under the format you've been having. You have instituted two formats. You've instituted a hybrid approach to your public hearing hearings and a virtual format for your meetings. Subject to particular conditions, one of which is already met. And that is a continuing state of emergency that, to our knowledge, and we've looked, the statewide state of emergency has not been withdrawn. So with that in existence, two circumstances would permit you to continue the remote format. One of those is of course a requirement by the county or the jurisdiction, and right now we are, we do not have that in San Diego County. However, it is also possible for the commission itself to make findings that would support some level, continued level of virtual meetings without the onerous requirements of the current brownout. In other words, what you're doing now, to put it very simply. And we're working very closely with this brand-new legislation. It's days-old. And we're working very closely with staff and other commissions and other legal practitioners to bring forward a proposal to this commission, certainly in, in conference with staff and the chair, that would permit that to continue. And we are, at this point, have a level of confidence we can do that. So as your, how does this affect venue? I too was impressed by I too was impressed by the in-person attendance, but it would affect venue in that it would continue to have the hybrid accessibility. And that's a good thing. And of course, the commission, even without this legislation, can continue the virtual accessibility for the public. So Chair Beame, for right now, I think that puts it in a nutshell.
Very good. Thank you for that. Commissioner Serbin, if at all possible, briefly?
I'll try. So a couple of questions and comments first for the collateral material. Jason, I appreciate the presentation as always. The collateral material was good. I'd like to suggest adding the word supervisory to a lot of those materials where that word doesn't appear. I think that's important to create the distinction in the public's mind between what we're doing and what many other jurisdictions are doing. Secondly, my question, a question as to the support that is, that will be provided to the commission during those public hearings. I know ABA SD has been doing a lot of AV support for these, for the hearing so far. Will the two public hearings that are the subject of this outreach plan also, will we also have that same level of AV support?
Commissioner Serbin, correct. You would.
Okay. Thank you. And then, so I also have the same question as to venue. Is there a reason why we had landed on the COC rather than the CAC?
Commissioner Serbin, to address your comment, and I believe one or two other commissioners have made that question. We originally had two locations. It was County Administration Center and the County Operations Center. Obviously, one is in downtown and the other one is in Kearney Mesa. I believe one might have not been available, and the other one may have been, I think, and we went, we're going back and forth. So IRC staff may be able to clarify what could or may or may not be available. I think along those lines, and perhaps it's a question of counsel, Marguerite, if, based on your read of this legislation and our ability to outreach concerning the time, if there was a change in venue, would it, being a virtual meeting, satisfy the public notice or within the amount of days that are necessary? If we were, let's say the commission were to switch venue or decide another location, but it being hybrid or having noticed for a virtual meeting, does that affect the ability of the commission to make that decision? And how, and I'm making that comment for the reason that it affects our ability to work very quickly to disseminate this information to the public.
Through the chair, if he wants me, I.
Please, go ahead.
Address that now, Chair Beame, or bring that back for discussion.
Is that echoing? Marguerite, let's bring it back, because, just for time's sake. Jason, let me clarify. So if we give you some guidance out of this meeting, that you've already heard some, ABA SD would be able to relook at the two public hearings and come back to us on the 30th?
It's possible. I think, you know, obviously, we're of the position of making sure that we do enough outreach to get enough folks to those for participation reasons. It would have to be a very quick decision here, and that would give us about exactly a week, correct?
Right. And we have a little bit of an advantage that the material doesn't have to be circulated till 24 hours before. So we have a little bit of time to put it together. I'll explain why I think that might be a good option in just a moment, but theoretically, it's possible for you.
Correct.
Okay. Barbara Jimenez, do you have anything you need to add to this?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to confirm, the COC is available for November 1st. The CAC, County Administration Center, is available December 2nd, and we're checking on the COC. One thing I'd like to add as well is that you may recall that staff were already preparing for the possibility that the IRC meetings would start meeting in person on October 7th. So the dates were already held, the CAC, we had all of those upcoming IRC regular meeting dates confirmed. When on 9/9, the IRC adopted the last schedule, there were changes to the regular meeting schedule and the addition of special meetings, and that's what caused not all of these dates to be available. So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Okay. Thank you for that. So commissioners, I'm going to beg your indulgence by asking that first, the motion be withdrawn so that we can wrap this up and postpone the agenda item to our next meeting on the 30th. Is that fair? Good. So then I have affirmation from the mover and the seconder on that. I'm just framing the different things we have to go over. All right. So commissioners, you will get a recommendation for a plan, and when we get to item nine, I'll explain how that's affected. I will ask ABA SD staff and counsel to consider the comments made tonight, including the possibilities of Saturday meetings, including the possibility of a coastal meeting, and including possible changes to the schedule that we approved on September 9th, all of which are possible, but will need to handle in a very focused way at our next meeting. Before we continue any further, let me briefly announce a change in the SPOC for outreach. Commissioners will recall that we originally faced a challenge in the lack of volunteers for the position. Co-Vice Chair Katerina stepped up and was kind enough to take up the assignment, not just the challenge of a new assignment, but also dealing with myriad unexpected developments. She is wrapping up her SPOC duties tonight, and I wanted to recognize her commitment to getting everything done well, done efficiently, and done to the benefit not just of the commission but the entire county. I'm also pleased to announce that Commissioner Ramsay Serbin is going to become SPOC for these matters. As you all know, and I think the public knows, Commissioner Serbin also brings great energy and commitment to these duties. He has big shoes to fill, but I know he can count on all of us to support him in that. So please join me in congratulating both of them for their past and future contributions on the SPOC work as well as other duties. With that, I will ask staff, counsel, and particularly ABA SD to work together on a plan using the September 9th approved timeline as the starting point and the thinking that has gone into the outreach plan, which we will approve next week. Moving on. We have to address times in that as well and maybe even options. And I'll look to the SPOC to help make sure that's presented in a way that the commission can act on it efficiently and effectively. All right. We move on to item nine, very briefly. The key factor to know here is that ABA SD has made a decision that they cannot formally support the four additional meetings and hearings that are in our current schedule. In other words, they are going to focus on the two public hearings currently scheduled for November 1st and December 2nd so that they can meet the high standards that they've established for themselves and that we've established for them and make sure the meetings are held, those meetings are held very efficiently. We've got a number of factors to look at in those meetings. For the four additional meetings that you see in the September 9th timeline, county staff is now going to take responsibility for setting those up and scheduling them. So all my comments earlier about having ABA SD staff and council work together is for that very reason, because we're going to need to have synergy in that, and I will ask staff to work very closely with council and ABA SD to absorb the comments made tonight. Commissioners, of course, are free to send individual comments. I'll ask you to send them to Barbara for proper circulation on any of these matters, any of the six meetings or other meetings you may want to propose, and we'll try to take them on in a very organized and focused way on September 30th. I'm sure ABA SD will continue to offer thoughts and comments on all this, and I appreciate, Jason, the flexibility you and your team have shown in taking this up. I promise you, we will get you an approved plan at our next meeting. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on that item?
None in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Beame.
Very good. Are there any urgent comments from commissioners on this agenda item? Seeing none, thank you very much. We technically move now to agenda item 10, ABA SD Outreach and Metrics Update. The challenge is our technical advisors really need to start taking things down. So contrary to my early expectation, I'm going to ask for a motion to table this agenda item. Mr. Serbin, is that a motion? Thank you. Second, Mr. Brown, thank you very much. Let me ask, David, if we can do a vote by acclamation, or do we need a recorded vote?
Oh, you can do a vote by acclamation. I should just note for the record that if any member of the public would like to address this item, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time.
Although we're tabling it, right? I'm sorry, Marguerite?
With remote meetings, it's got to be a roll call.
Very good. Thank you for that. Okay. David, any comments from the public? We'll just take care of that really quick.
None. That concludes public comment.
All right. David, could you please call the roll for the vote to table agenda item 10?
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ is absent. Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Did we table item nine as well? I was confused about that.
We addressed it without a motion. That's why I was asking if there were any urgent comments on it.
I didn't see any report on it, so I can't vote on that. But I will, on item 10, I vote to postpone that table.
Thank you. Thanks for your understanding.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kruglia?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Item 10, affirmative.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Beame?
Aye.
Chair Beame, that motion passes unanimously with all board, commissioner members who are present, voting aye.
Thank you very much. So moving on to item 11, Discussion Regarding Future Agenda Items. As always, commissioners are welcome to propose items either now or in a direct email to staff. I do want to let commissioners know that the next meeting, Thursday, the 30th, will be all virtual and begin at 5:30. We already have a number of agenda items likely to be set for that meeting, including the issues we just discussed, the ABA SD outreach plan, including the two draft map public hearings, the plan for the four additional meetings in September 9th timeline, the possible approval of the selection of the special Voting Rights Act Council, which an ADAC committee has been doing great work on, more information on the IRC's bylaws and policies regarding absences as we enter the most critical period of our work, an update and possible ways ahead on the legislatively mandated IRC final report, and separately, a collection of lessons learned from this commission, and the final summary from our legislative ADAC committee, including the recent legislative and California Supreme Court actions that I think you've all been aware of. That's the list that I already have. Unless there's anything urgent to say out loud, I'll ask commissioners to just provide Barbara Jimenez with any additional agenda items you'd like to see addressed next Thursday. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
If any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any virtual hands, that concludes public comment on this item, Chair Beame.
Very good. I do want to check with the clerk and the council before I move to adjournment, that we've met all our procedural requirements.
As far as I can see, you have.
Very good. Marguerite?
Yeah, good to hear, Chair Beame.
Very good. We move to adjournment. That concludes the business before the independent redistricting commission this evening. Our next pre-mapping public hearing, again, will be Saturday, September 25th at 1:00 p.m. at the Spring Valley Community Center, also held virtually. And the IRC's next meeting will be a special meeting on Thursday, September 30th at 5:30 p.m., held virtually via Zoom. As always, please be in touch with staff if you have any questions or comments. This meeting is adjourned at 8:05 p.m. Thank you very, very much.